Will the council meeting for June 5, 2017, please come to order? I'll rise and salute the flag.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, in its republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Can I shut the door? Is he here?
Yes, he is.
Okay. Roll call of councillors.
Roll call of the members. Councillor Gignano is absent. Councillor Guanasso?
Here.
Here. Councillor Keefe?
Here.
Here. Councillor McKenna?
Here.
Here. Councillor Morabito?
Here.
Here. Councillor Nowoselski?
Here.
Here. Councillor Patch?
Here.
Here. Councillor Powers?
Here.
Here. Councillor Rotundo?
Here.
Here. Councillor Zimbudo?
Here.
And Council President Haas?
Here.
Here. Quorum is present. Item number 17-190, that the city council award a certificate of appreciation to Rashid Mukhaber for his organization of Moroccan Cultural Day, which is celebrated on May 20, and for his community activism.
Is Rashid here? Not too long. Is Bill coming up?
Yeah.
Rashid, come over here.
Thank you so much. President Haas?
Very good.
Thank you so much.
Anytime, Rashid. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. There were times we honored people for many, many things. And at this point, I want to recognize Rashid Mukhaber, who has come to the United States in 2013?
2003.
2003, I'm sorry. And he was born in Casablanca, Morocco. And he's worked very hard for himself, his family, and for the city of Revere. He's gone to school, got his BS, got his master's in business administration. He's involved with the Moroccan community. He's involved with the city Revere community. And just some of the things that he's done so far, he's run an iftar. And if anybody doesn't know what an iftar, it's a fast-breaking dinner that we had at the Beauchesne School several years ago. And it was the end of Ramadan, which we are in now. And he had approximately 300 people there at the Beauchesne School in the cafeteria. Now, that is a feat, to put all the people together from all aspects of life, all religions, and all business communities. And everybody participated. It was a very, very rewarding evening. He's into the political journalism symposium, the kids' city council meeting, the Eid al-Fatihr celebration, and of course, the Moroccan festival celebration that was held on Shirley Ave two weeks ago. Now, again, over 300 people came down to that. We have over 50 tables of various artifacts, food, clothing. And it was an amazing day with the music and the celebration that everybody had. And I want to congratulate Rashid for all his hard work and his continuation to work for the city of Revere.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Rashid.
I want to applaud Ira for bringing this motion in. The mayor, it was actually their idea and they added me to the motion because Rashid is a friend of mine. And it is very essential to know one's culture as it is a sign of us as individuals, as human beings. Culture marks our customs. It marks our beliefs. It marks an understanding of who we are. So I think it's very important that we understand who our neighbors are and learn about their culture. And this is why we commend Rashid. Not only did he put together the Moroccan festival to celebrate Moroccan-American culture, but for the entire community to get a better understanding of the Moroccan-American community and to get everyone together. And with everyone knowing each other and knowing more about each other, we'll be less strangers. So congratulations and keep up your community activism. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Yeah, you stand right over here and speak in front of the speaker. You don't have to lean down. Right here you go. Can I be heard?
Yes.
Thank you, President Haas, for inviting me to speak this evening with respect to my friend Rashid Mukhaber. In last week's journal, two teachers from the Beauchesne School received a grant and they selected to go to Morocco to learn the culture of that country. And in that article, it stated that they believed that they have 20% Moroccan students, Moroccan-American students, in their classroom. And I could not help but think about the impact that the man we are recognizing today, Rashid Mukhaber, had an effect on the interest that they had in the country of Morocco. In fact, Rashid has had an impact on the Moroccan-American community since arriving in Revere with, already stated, a BS and a master's degree in medical technology. I'm not going to describe what he does except that it involves a heart being taken out and put in a box. Do you want to tell them? And then, you know, then put back in. But the machinery that goes with that is his responsibility. I'd like to speak about Zara Magazine. I brought a copy of Zara Magazine for all the councillors, which I can show you later on. When I met Rashid, he was publishing Zara Magazine. Zara means red rose in Arabic. And I became an editor for the magazine. And I'll just list a few people that he or I interviewed and put articles into the magazine. Mayor Kurt Atoni of Somerville. I hope I pronounced that right. Did I? Marty Walsh, the mayor of Boston, who also invited us, Rashid and I, to an iftar in his office. And then later on, a media day for various ethnic groups in the city of Boston. Now, we know this is not Boston, but we were invited and we attended. Rashid also interviewed Congresswoman Catherine Clark. I interviewed Governor Baker on East Boston Day a couple of years ago when he was running for office. They called it Easty Pride Day. Unhappily, Zara Magazine went out of business when Rashid got this new job with the box, the hearts. Is the liver included? Or the liver also? And he just could not do this job. It was impossible to do this job while traveling all over the world. When I say all over the world, I mean all over the world. Brazil, Australia, Germany, France, every country almost on earth. Did you go to Russia yet?
Not yet.
I'm not going to go there yet, okay. So the magazine shut down, but Rashid continued as a Moroccan-American organizer. Among other achievements is the interfaith community iftar, which all religions, from Jewish to Catholic to Protestant to Muslim, attended. Very, very successful. Also, what we call a political journalism symposium. And this lasted an entire week. And it was an opportunity for students to do some of the following things. They came here to City Hall and they actually watched a city hall meeting. Somebody over there. Where's that kid that says he wants to be a city councillor? Where did he go? There he is. Stand up a minute. Okay, you want to be a city councillor? How old are you? 13? Wait a couple of years, we'll put you up here.
Where do you live?
He would be the first Moroccan.
Where do you live?
So we had a student city council meeting right here. Mayor Arigo was there, standing at the podium. And we had a councillor in each and every seat, student councillors. We will be doing that again in the fall because Mayor Arigo said, can we do this again? And I said, yes. We would like to do it at a time when the councillors could be present, maybe in the evening. I think it would be better. The students actually spoke up about motions. They made motions. There were some debates going on. They debated certain things. And they voted. Hassan, weren't you a councillor? You believe you were?
We saw. That and Adam.
Oh, yeah, Adam, the two twins over here. We saw. Where's Wee Saw? In the back there. I would ask you to notice that all of these activities were an effort to integrate the young people into Revere, the state of Massachusetts, and our country. They visited not just this office here in this building, but they also visited the State House. They had a tour of the State House that was led by Rose Lee Vincent, state representative representing Revere. Now, the final thing we would have is the Moroccan Cultural Day. How many people attended that Moroccan Cultural Day? Okay. It was a shockingly successful day. We were shocked, I think. They estimated over 1,000 people were there. Thanks to you for coming. We appreciate it. Now, let me be very honest about this. This guy right here that we're honoring today, he basically did everything himself. Everything. And there was a lot of organizing that had to be done. It was not easy to do. It was very difficult to do. I don't know how he did it. You know, he would call me from Australia.
But I got a lot of help from the kids. Thank you so much for being able to.
We're going to have the kids come up.
Yeah, I would call them.
So the next day, he calls me from Australia again. I said, you called me yesterday from Australia. Yes, but I had to fly across the country to Brisbane. Was it Brisbane you went to? Brisbane, to Brisbane. So he's been all over the world. All over the world. In closing, let me just say that Rashid is a good and decent man. The people of Revere are lucky to have him. And so am I.
Thank you so much.
Ready for a picture? Then we'll let you speak.
Yeah, sure.
Let's get this out of the way.
That's your job, Steve.
Hold that. Please have. Stephen? Let Stephen.
Kids, all the kids, please. Hassan, Hassan, Adam. We need the kids, all kids, please.
All kids or just the councillors?
Those kids, maybe if there is like eight of them, we'll put them up front.
Too many kids, too many.
No? Thank you. Hello, everyone? Sure. Thanks to councillors Steve Morabito and Ira Nowoselski, as well as all the councillors for presenting me with this award today. This award was presented to me, but I'm accepting it on behalf of the Moroccan-American citizens in the city of Revere. As well as my country of origin, Morocco, and all the Moroccans who will be watching this ceremony on social media. Thanks to Mayor Arigo and all the officials for supporting all the events organized by the Moroccan-American community in this city. Finally, I would like to thank the man that I wouldn't be able to do this without him, Mr. Bill Jackson. Mr. Bill Jackson. Thank you so much, Mr. Bill Jackson, for being a great friend and mentor and a great inspiration for me. And I will promise you that I will do the same thing with all of these kids. Thank you so much.
All right, city clerk. 17-176. That has to be removed, correct?
First one.
On file?
Yep.
How about... How about the other one?
Yep.
Who's presenting it?
Councillor, I guess. Yeah. What?
At this time, the Revere City Council and Mayor Arigo... At this time, the Revere City Council and Mayor Arigo will present a joint citation to Assistant City Clerk Joanne Giarla in recognition on the occasion of her 50th work anniversary.
All right. Why? Okay.
So Joanne, it was just mentioned that, you know, 50 years means you must have started working here probably before you were born. But for as long as I can remember, and I'm only 37 years old, but as long as I can remember coming into City Hall, I remember seeing you. You've been a staple in City Hall throughout the years. So thank you for all that you do and your commitment to the city. I am going to read, this is a City of Revere executive and legislative citation. And it says, "An acknowledgement of exceptional dedication to the city of Revere by serving as the Assistant City Clerk under three city clerks and too many city councils to name. Over a span of five decades, special recognition is hereby accorded to Joanne Giarla." Thank you for all of this.
Joanne, I was wondering who's going to last longer, you or me? Joanne?
Joanne, on behalf of the city council, we'd like to award, give you these flowers for all your years of service. Thank you very much.
Anyone else want to say anything? Anyone else? Come on, Arthur. Wow, there's somebody in City Hall who's been here longer than me. And certainly, it's been a great pleasure to work with Joanne and the great staff of the city clerk's office. They make our job so much easier. And so we owe you a debt of gratitude. And more importantly, we owe you our friendship. Congratulations.
You took it to Social Security.
Joanne, we'd like to have you speak. Yeah, you're used to that, right?
Thank you very much. This is a welcome after being at the Social Security office all day. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Oh, George, get in here, please.
Oh, here he is. Want him to hold some flowers? This way. To the right, to the right.
Onto public hearings. 17-149, communication from the Director of Finance relative to the establishment of Capital Improvement Stabilization Fund and transfer from free cash.
Judge Nuzzoni?
Okay, hello? Yes, the reason for this communication was we're looking for the establishment of the Capital Improvement Stabilization Fund. What it would do is put money into the, an account, which would be the stabilization fund for capital improvements. And out of there, we would fund a capital improvement project, on a timeline that goes along with the capital improvement plan, a program. Congratulations, Joanne. So that's what we're looking to do tonight to start this stabilization fund. And there's a plan that we worked with UMass that will be presented to the council that will show how these monies will be used in the future. That's all I have to say.
Are there any other proponents to this? Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just very quickly, I know we've, I've talked about this before, but we are looking to use a portion of free cash to fund a capital investment plan. That plan will be put before the council so that you'll see some of the work that we want to get done. But we want to have a five-year rolling capital plan that is a...
that is achievable and full of projects that we can actually get done and that we're dedicating money towards. So, making sure that not only we establish this fund, but similar to the stabilization fund, we are going to have a percentage that goes in from free cash going forward automatically into that fund, so it will continue to be funded and continue to have money in it so that we can have capital projects that are done by the city.
Mr. Mayor, is there any amount of dollars you want to transfer in?
We had, I think, once the ordinance creates the fund, we will look at a million-dollar initial investment in that fund.
Thank you.
And that is coming from the little over four million dollars that has been certified in free cash.
Thank you. Any other proponents? There be none, any opponents? There be none? Any councilors? Counselor?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm a little perplexed how this was different than what I proposed about a year and a half ago. Can anybody tell me why it's different from before? Same thing, and I was told it was impossible to do.
Counselor, I'm not, I'm not through you to the counselor. I'm not interested necessarily in credit. If it's a good idea and you made it, that's, that's a great idea, and we're funding it.
Not even about credit, and I'm just, I'm trying to find out what's different from it. Is it for capital projects? Is it for school building projects? That's the question.
This is for all city-owned property and capital projects related to city-owned property.
Would this also include, like, highway, roadways, things?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm forward a thousand percent. Thank you.
Any other councilors like to speak on it? There be none? I refer this to the Council of the Hall. All right?
Item seventeen dash one sixty-three, this is a public hearing, Communication from the City Engineer Relative to Street Acceptances.
Any proponents? Just identify yourself, please.
Nick Reistrum, City Engineer. Counselors, this is a request to accept three sections of streets that already exist as streets in the City of Riviera. This is necessary in order to secure funding for our Safe Roots to School project, which is being handled through Mass DOT for the Garfield School. In order to spend federal monies on these streets for improvement, they need to be accepted. What acceptance also does, it adds to our list in order to secure chapter, additional Chapter Ninety funds. And so that's why we want to vote in favor of this in order to keep the Safe Roots to School project moving forward, and also, like I said, the impact it has to the Chapter Ninety funding.
Thank you, sir. Any other proponents in favor of close that section? Any opponents? There be none, I close that section. Any councilors? Counselor Nowosowski?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I'm glad this came up. These streets are in Ward Two, and it's part of the Safe Roots to School program for the kids walking to and from Garfield School, and it also protects them from a lot of the traffic issues and allows them to cross the street and crosswalks some of the streets. And we did have a public meeting here at City Hall earlier, several months ago, in the last month. We had a meeting down at the Garfield School. We had residents came down to hear what's going on. We wanted to show them exactly what was happening, and everybody understood it, and they were all very pleased to see that we're here protecting our kids and protecting our roadways. So, I hope that the Council will move ahead and accept these streets. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else? Counselor Keefe?
Thank you, Mr. President. I too have seen the success of this program in and around some of the schools of Ward Four. I think that this program the city's been working with for the last number of years has been such a compliment. It's always nice to see the kids having a great route to get to school. I know that the people that have been responsible for putting these lists together and executing them have done an excellent job, so we're really happy to see this, and I'll be happy to help approve this when it comes to the full Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Guanasso?
Mr. President, having two schools within my ward, I certainly appreciate the source and the funding of how this is applied for and how it's done, and certainly given a good thought to it. So, it's a protection for the kids to walk to school safely and enjoy what they're supposed to do to school. So, I will vote favorably for this, and in the future, when Ward Three needs it, we'll seek the same source. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counsel? There be none, I close that section. We'll call.
Shall the City Council accept the following streets? FitzHenry Square, two hundred and fifty feet in length, from Campbell Ave. to Centennial Ave. Blake Street, one hundred and thirty-five feet in length, from North Shore Road to Garfield Ave. And Alger Road, three hundred feet in length, from Garfield Ave. and Blake Street to Avalon Street. Counselor Gino is absent. Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Nowosowski?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Patch?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zambudo is recused, and Council President Haas?
Yes.
Yes, the streets have been accepted.
Seventeen one ninety-one.
Council Order seventeen one ninety-one, Public Hearing, DWSRF Construction Project Number Four Two O Two, and that should read three point five million for lead service replacement project construction.
Nick Reistrum, City Engineer. As many of you know, as a result of the water meter replacement project, the city was able to identify somewhere between two and three hundred locations where lead services existed. This funding would be for construction to remove that lead, those lead service lines from the city's infrastructure. And this is, as I'm sure everyone's aware of the situations that happen in Flint and other places, it's something that is very important, that needs to be addressed from a public safety point of view and from a safe drinking water point of view. And so, this is funding that I'm in support of for those reasons.
Is this mandated, Nick?
Excuse me?
Is this mandated? Part of the consent order?
No, it's not directly related to the consent decree. However, there is movement, you know, among the state to remove these types of connections and service lines as a whole.
Thank you. Any other proponents?
George Anzoni, Director of Finance, City of Riviera, two eighty-one Broadway, Riviera, Mass. I'm in, I'm in favor of this project because it's part of the water meter replacement project that we have been going on for the last two years and ten, almost eleven months. This is the connection that comes in from the street into the home before the water meter, and as the City Engineer said, we have identified almost three hundred homes that need this replacement. The effects of lead in water, I think we all know and heard, and we heard especially in the Boston Public Schools, how problematic it is, and this is something we want to make the drinking water in this community much more safe. More details will be given to you by Mr. Bob Button, the CDM, but I do want to be recorded as being in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anzoni. Any other proponents?
Yeah, the dog wants to speak. Jan Dumas, Fifty Wallman Avenue. I'm hoping that everybody does agree with this. I'm thinking that this is sort of in the category of no-brainer and should have been done a very long time ago. Please, everyone vote for this, and please make sure that we remove anything that has lead from our water system, and if possible, investigate all of the homes in the city again, just to make sure it's that important to me. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the Council. Robert Button with CDM Smith, Seventy-Five State Street in Boston. I was here to just reiterate and reaffirm what Nick said, and I believe in the packages that the City Engineer provided to you. There's information on lead services that's developed and provided to your constituents, as well as information from the MWRA on the importance of addressing lead in the drinking water. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions if anyone had any. Thank you.
Thank you. Opponents? There be none, I close this section. Any opponents against? I close that section. Any councilors? Counselor Guanasso?
Mr. President, thank you. Just an observation, you're looking for three and a half million dollars, and that comes out to roughly with three hundred people needy of this, about ten thousand dollars per home. Is that kind of a high figure? Can anybody answer that? It's averaging out more than ten thousand dollars per home.
So, we want to make sure, City Engineer Nick Reistrum, that we're able to take care of everything all at once. It's possible that you'll see ones that are cheaper than that, and maybe some that are more complicated that have more involvement. But in general, we just want to make sure that we're addressing everything that's involved there.
I know, Nick, there's a great need for this. They certainly want to remove lead from all the homes, but I just can't imagine ten thousand dollars per home to remove these pipes. I mean, you're moving a pipe, and you're discarding it, and you're replacing it with something else which is not lead, and ten thousand dollars seems to be a lot of money.
I just want to say that George Anzoni, Director of Finance, City of Riviera, the reason the estimate may seem high is because there may be a number of things that have to be done. However, we have the agreement with the SRF, and when you do this type of loan project is that if you don't spend the money, you may have the loan out there, but you can spend up to that amount. But if you spend less, you just spend it, and then you send the rest of the order. But the estimate is there so that we make certain that we have, and they told, they said that to us, the SRF and the Mass was, that to make certain that we have enough money in there because we want to get that one bite of the apple. So, we wanted to make sure, since we couldn't go back, that we had enough money in there originally so that we wouldn't have to take a second bite of the apple.
And who does the review on behalf of the city in the performance of this work?
The review is done by CDM on behalf of the city on the...
CDM Smith does the review?
Go ahead.
And Nick as well.
On every single job? And will, will, will be an availability of the findings in each home that we work with?
Yes. So, this funding accounts for also construction oversight. It also includes details, police details, that may be needed. As you can imagine, when you're dealing with individual homeowners, it gets to be complicated with scheduling and things like that, so there's some contingency built in there. We would have construction oversight that would be overseeing each individual home, and then those would be reporting to me in terms of making sure that things are done smoothly and that we're keeping record of all the information that's...
So, each, each address will have a cost fixed to it?
I guess at some point. We don't, we'd have to look into it more. I don't know the specifics of each one, so, you know, you don't really know what you might run into.
How are you going to accurately record it, then, if you don't know?
Well, we would do that. We would keep track of that. I mean, that's part of the funding mechanism actually requires that type of...
It's vague. For three and a half million dollars, it's pretty vague, you know? It's a lot of money, and...
It is a lot.
And it's coming from the city government that we have to pay for all this when we wind this out, so...
Right.
Thank you.
Just to reiterate, it does, it includes the construction, it includes the oversight, it includes details, it includes any of the scheduling and, you know, sort of little complications, and then it also includes some contingency, you know, in case things, you know, pop up that, you know, were unforeseen. And then it also includes the documentation of all of this work after the fact. And so, for me, that's very important because there has been in the past a lack of data that has been maintained on things that have been done in the city, and we want to make sure that that, you know, going forward, we have record of all these things that happened.
It's important to me as a taxpayer, I want to make sure...
Absolutely.
There's an accountability, that's all I'm looking for.
Absolutely.
And if, and there's a source that we can refer to thereafter on each household.
Yes, me.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Guanasso. Counselor Powers?
Thank you, Mr. President. Nick, the work that was done on, down on Sagamo Street, and Ponce Street, Calumet Street, Dun Road, that area down there?
Yes.
Those were replacing all of the old water lines?
The main lines, yes.
Yeah, and I saw firsthand the lines that were taken out of there, and I could show you a picture now of unbelievable, the muck and the filth and grease and everything that was in those old lines. And I think the city should be applauded, whoever's responsible for that, for making that happen. And the other important thing, too, is that if you drive down those streets now, and they were done like, I don't know, seven, eight months ago, nine months ago, they're not sinking. They were compacted properly, the proper fill was put in there, and that's the first time I've seen that happen in a long time. So, where we're doing streets and we're repaving them, and then in some case, we have to go in to replace a water line, a sewer line, whatever it might be, the first time, and I've ever seen this before, they're being compacted properly, and so you're driving over them, you're not getting jolted around in your car. So, I want to compliment whoever's responsible for that. Thank you, sir.
So, this specific instance, a lot of that, or if not all of that credit, has to go to Don Cheramella from my office, who I had on-site during every day of that construction to make sure that that work was being done properly and that the work that was being contracted, the finished product was an acceptable product for the city. So, really...
I was down there when Donny was doing it, and it is acceptable as far as I'm concerned, and I'm glad to hear that.
I don't think you'll see any of those trenches sinking. I'm very surprised. Thank you.
Counselor Page?
Thank you, Mr. President. Nick, I have the same questions that Counselor Guanasso had here, as I have for the last several years. You come out with a figure of three million, over three million dollars for three hundred, what, three hundred houses. Is this, and this has, this has nothing to do with the, the fine we're paying, the government fine we're paying, the decree?
No, the consent decree is related to sewer and stormwater. This is similar, it's the same funding source as some of the work that we're doing for the consent decree, but the city doesn't have, is not involved in a consent decree or any other legal action related to lead services.
So, have you got, now, is, my question has always been, as far as the oversight, design, are they separate contracts in the actual people you're going to be hiring to do the work?
So, the contracts are separate, yes.
Have they been put out for bid?
No. So, engineering services, I believe, is an exempt situation, so they don't go out that way.
Say that again?
It's for engineering services?
For engineering services, you don't, for three million...
So, this is a separate contract?
Three million dollar issue, doesn't have to go out for bid?
No, 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 that's, that does. The construction work that's involved here, which is the bulk of that money, would be a public bid.
Okay.
So, other contractors, you know, water contractors would bid on that work, just like you would see bids on the sewer work that we're doing or any other horizontal work.
So, to get to this three million dollar figure, was that out for bid to find out exactly what work had to be done, or just CDM, Smith, it's just their figure?
So, that's something that CDM put together on behalf of the city. It's a planning level estimate, and that's why it includes a lot of those sort of unknowns That's why it includes a lot of those, you know, unknowns I spoke of, police details, contingency for, you know, what we might run into in the field that we don't necessarily know. There's a lot of that built into it, and that's why you see it as sort of a higher number. But, you know, as Director of Finance Anzoni stated, that you have this money available, it doesn't necessarily mean that, you know, you spend all of it, you know, maybe some of that bids come in lower and whatnot. But we want to make sure that we're able to take care of all of it in the event that there is, you know, bigger, you know, higher priced items that we don't foresee, you know, from the beginning.
So have you got a breakdown of how much money is actually going to the oversight design than the actual work contract?
Well, we don't know what the, what the contract is, because it hasn't gone out to bid, so I don't know--
But we're just giving $3 million to CDM Smith, and they're going to--
So we're not giving it to CDM. The bulk of that is going to be going to the contractor that bids on that work? It will not be CDM because they don't--
I understand that, but they're going to, the contracts will go under bid, but we have no, no say on how much money is going to go to the oversight?
No, it's--
Just the contract?
There is a contract that would be executed for the oversight, and that money would be paid to the oversight engineers, depending on how much work they do. It's not a blank check or anything.
Well, myself and other councils on this, over the last, my last 10 years, we've, we've asked, we've asked for itemized, an itemized list of actual money that is actually going to the work, and are the, like, say, just take St. Mary's, for example, the, the design, how much money went to the design, and how much actually went to the contractor. But I've, we've also, as a whole, have asked twice for an audit of CDM Smith, and we've gotten no, no answer on that. We just, all we want to know, I'm not saying that there's any, any misuse, but I just want, I think it's time, I mean, we just keep, you come here, they, not just, it's not just this administration, I've been, this is my third administration. In every administration, in June, we get these numbers figured out, thrown at us, and then when we ask questions, we don't get any answers. So that's why I think we all agreed on, the councils here agreed on an audit, and, you know, we really like, I think the taxpayers, we owe it to the taxpayers, when you start throwing figures at us, the $3 million for a job like this, believe me, I, I, we definitely have to get this work done. I am going to vote to have it done. But I really would like a breakdown of where the money is going. We've been doing it for 10 years now without any answers. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor Patch. Council--
Bob.
McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. One of the 300 houses is mine, and I have lead in my house. I just want to know, just can you give me a rough idea of what you have to do to remove that?
So the, the service line needs to be excavated from the house, in some cases out to where the curb stop is, in other cases, out further to where it meets the main line. And that entire line has to be then replaced with a new non-lead line, which would be a copper. Once you do that, then the excavation would be backfilled, and the site would have to be restored, and if you have, you know, grass or, you know, you've got to go under the sidewalk and all that.
I live on a hill, a very large hill.
So then that would have to, you know, be addressed. I don't know if you have landscaping and stuff, but--
I do.
--you'd have to restore what was then dug up.
So that $10,000 per household that you're talking about, that would cover expenses on, on your behalf, and I wouldn't have to put any expenses out? Or would I have to hire a plumber? I mean, because--
I don't believe, I don't believe so.
Okay.
If you're doing work inside the house, I think that's you. But as it is now, this, that entire line is going to be covered under this project.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Tondo.
Thank you. Nick, the question that I have is, what's the exact number dedicated for the oversight of the 300 properties that need to be looked at? And who's going to be doing it? Is it going to be you, which I think would be a monumental task for one person, or will CDM be doing this?
It would be CDM under my supervision. I don't have the exact number with me. I think that's something that we can talk about--
Is it $100,000? Is it $200,000?
I don't have that. I don't know what it is.
Well, I can't vote on this tonight. Thank you.
Councilor Morabito.
Thank you. I have a quick question. Once the bid goes out and is accepted, when we have an understanding of what the work is, will you be break, will we get a breakdown in percentage, or will it be itemized? Will we have a, be able to see, have a visual so we can better understand where all this money is going? Kind of give us a rational explanation so we can let our constituents know?
Sure. So the way the bid works, that you have unit pricing with line items for, hopefully to cover all that work, and that's a way that we're able to keep track of how much of this we did, how much of that we did, and, you know, that's an easy way to provide itemization for each of the different houses. Like I said, some, you know, one house might have this that needs to be done, whereas this other house needs something else, you know, that's a little different. They're all obviously going to be attended to in terms of the water service, but each house is going to have a little bit different. We are able to track that through the contract, and I don't see any reason why we wouldn't be able to provide that either during the work or, you know, as a whole afterwards.
No, I would appreciate that, I'm sure. My fellow counselors would feel the same way, if they, they can actually see what is, what the expenditures are--
Sure.
--or what is being spent.
Any of that work that, that, you know, comes, runs through my office, my office door is always open, if that's some information that you want, you know, that's fine, you can come and request that, you can take a look at it anytime.
Thank you, Councilor.
Thank you.
Councilor Tondo.
I believe Counselor Zambudo hasn't had a first time. Okay, thank you. Just, just quickly, why aren't we using the DPW to do the oversight of this particular issue?
I don't think that the DPW has the resources to do that work. They're pretty stretched--
So you would rather pay an outside company instead of paying a--
I don't think that we have a choice.
I'm sorry?
I don't think that we have a choice, I think that--
These guys know the system better than you do.
I'm sorry?
These, most of these guys know the system better than you do. They've been here for 40 years, half of them.
That might be true, but they don't have the, the time to dedicate to the oversight every day.
That's not what I was told. I spoke to both, well, I'll say six individuals that I think would know their schedule. Now, if the mayor doesn't want to pay overtime for it, that's a different thing altogether. That's why I want to find out what the cost is for CDM. You know, I, I want the comparison.
Sure.
And you're saying that, you know, we should come to your office and ask for it? Well, I'm asking for it now, you should have this. You know, you're asking for millions of dollars, and you don't have a simple piece of information.
We don't have the specifics of this contract. It still needs to be--
When you put on a RFQ, you don't understand how much you're going to use for oversight?
No, we haven't, we haven't gone to that point. We're not, we didn't put out--
So you even haven't put into this? You don't even have an idea?
No, of course, we've looked into it, we, this is a planning level, we're talking about planning level numbers.
This is basic information, sir. Basic information.
Okay. But I can tell you that the, the DBW, they don't have the resources to dedicate the, the bodies to do this oversight for every day, for eight hours a day. They have other things--
I'm told something different by the crew, so--
Okay.
--you know something that they don't.
Thank you, Councilor. Counselor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. In the interest of educating the public and maybe some of my colleagues, some of us have construction knowledge, understand line items in a contract, understand that there may be five feet of pipe, lead pipe being replaced in one job, and 500 feet of pipe being replaced in another job. I think it would, it would comfort, I think, my colleagues and especially the viewing audience, if you gave an idea of what project management costs would, would be on a, on a, on the oversight of these projects, because you obviously don't have even a scope of work on, on the project. So you don't have a contract out to bid, you don't, but can you give like a round figure of a 20% of the, 10% of the contract for project management? I mean, we've got professionals in the audience, I'm sure that Bob Button or somebody from the CDM Smith can give us an idea of what project management costs of these jobs are going to be. We know that, and my colleague from Ward 1, her house might cost in excess of the $10,000 because of her situation, and others may cost $1,000. But, but basically, there is a format of oversight or project management, or whatever you want to call it, clerk of works, or, or whatever the term may be. But there's, I think that would comfort everybody to know that it's not an astronomical number that, that is, that is put into the contract as, as a, as a project management cost.
So it's going to depend on the complexity of all of them. I think if you want to think about maybe a 10 or 15%, probably is a good number to start with. The problem is that, especially in this situation, you're talking about individual homes that all have their own unique--
I understand that, Nick, and I was, you just did what I wanted you to do.
Okay.
You, you, you let everybody know that we're not talking about 30 or 40% for oversight, you know?
No, the overwhelming bulk of this money is all construction.
I understand, and I also, I also understand that, and I disagree with my colleagues, that we could do this in-house, because this is not a type of project that, that you can do on overtime and, and stuff like that, so--
Point of information.
What's your point?
Number one, I'm being told by several people, including contractors, that this is dealing with backfill. I dealt with this in 2005, when the issue of drain layers came up for the entire city, in which people were actually opening up the street and so forth, similar project, similar idea, similar scope of work. It can be done by the DPW. We disagree.
With all, with all due respect to my colleague, I would put my 40 years of construction experience on the line and think that I am the expert on this particular thing. I won't try to--
I think Joe Magliani has a little more experience than you.
I won't try to, I won't try to talk about medical issues, and I don't think he should talk about construction. Thank you.
Councilor Novoseltsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I just have a question to, to Nick. Now, we're talking about low-cost funding. Now, are we also talking about the city paying for the, the removal of this lead from each person's home?
So this is a loan.
To the city?
That's, right. And the city would pay for that debt service, you know, once the loan became active, or I'm not sure of the terminology, but--
So the city is going to pay for every, every--
Correct.
--these 300 houses' lead service--
Correct.
--to be replaced?
Hmm? That's right.
And it won't cost the homeowner anything?
Not at this point.
Thank you.
I just got a point of, point of information. Thank you, Mr. President. I have to agree with Councilor Tondo here on one, on one issue. I know for a fact that when the DPW were getting overtime to oversight, to the job, the work that was being done, they were, they were moved, they were removed, and, and they, nobody was, nobody was watching the, the contractors when they were doing this, those, I believe that it might have been the, the smoke test and all that work they were doing, they were opening up fire hydrants, and, and those DPW workers on, on the overtime were making sure that they put the covers back on correctly and, and what have you. And I, I have heard that once they were taken off the job, the covers weren't being put on correctly, and, and I think, it's only, it's my opinion, I mean, I don't have 40 years of experience in, in construction, but for a simple, the money that we spend on oversight with, with CDM Smith, if I had a choice of a couple hours of overtime for a very capable DPW worker to watch that job, I think I'd go with the DPW worker. That's my opinion. So again, I just want to save the taxpayer money. I've been trying to do this for like 10, 10 years, just trying to find out, you know, you come up with this fine, this big figure, and we don't even know how much of that's been paid. Every, every year, you come in June and you say, "We need $3 million here, $4 million there." I mean, really? That's why, again, I've tried to get an audit, and I don't know why, you know, and not just recently, I, through past administrations, I've always been trying to get an itemized figure of the oversight design money that's put into this, this figure, and the actual construction work. Now, if, if we can just go back to the old system, I, we were saving money there with the DPW, doing a couple hours overtime a day, and, and it ended up costing us more in the long run to fix the work that was being done. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Can I just clarify? This isn't overtime. We're not talking overtime here, we're talking about oversight for eight hours during regular working hours a day. So it's--
A point of information, and just hire a couple more guys for DPW that are, and that you can, they can do labor work while the guys that are very experienced here in water and sewage work can, can oversight the job. It's a, it's a very simple answer. I mean, instead of the millions that we're, we're dishing out here for, for oversight. Thank you.
Roll call.
Excuse me, Mr. President? You're rolling your eyes for what? This is a simple oversight issue, right?
I didn't roll my eyes, Counselor.
Then I must be blind.
Counselor, the issue is closed for the council. Roll call on the loan order.
Shall the city council approve a loan order for DWSRF construction project number 4202 in the amount of $3.5 million for lead service replacement project construction? Counselor Gennino is absent. Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
That's the correct number here?
Yes.
Okay. Stand corrected. Shall the city council approve a loan order for DWSRF construction project number 4202 in the amount of $3,315,000 for lead service replacement project construction? Counselor Gennino is absent. Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoseltsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch?
Well, I'm going to vote--
Yes and no.
Well--
Yes and no.
Yes for the lead removal. I will vote yes. Thank you.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Tondo?
No.
No, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Haas. Yes, the loan order has been approved.
No, the--
Motion to table.
Roll call on the table of the motion.
A point of order, a parliamentary procedure, we're in third reading.
To what?
Table's table. Not discussion, no debate, no, nothing, zero. That's the matter of rule.
Ask for a roll call on that.
I'm asking for a roll call on the tablization. Roll call.
Roll call on the table to motion, I'm sorry, roll call to table the resolution. Counselor Gennino is absent. Counselor Guanasso?
No.
No, Counselor Keefe?
No.
No, Counselor McKenna?
No.
No, Counselor Morabito?
No.
No, Counselor Novoseltsky?
No.
No, Counselor Patch?
No.
No, Counselor Powers?
No.
No, Counselor Tondo?
No.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
No.
No, and Council President Haas?
No.
No, motion is not tabled. Motion fails.
Suspension rules. Hope it does not prevail.
Reconsideration does not prevail.
Roll call.
To sign the resolution?
Yeah.
Roll call on the resolution for DWSRF project number 4202. Counselor Janino is absent. Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo?
No.
No, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Haas?
Yes.
Yes, the resolution has been approved.
Now, gentlemen, we have four more of these resolutions to go through. A lot of these we have addressed in the past, so hold your comments if you would. Thank you.
Public hearing on Council Order 17-192, CWSRF planning project number 4176 in the amount of $600,000 for illicit connection detection and some pump investigations.
Any proponents?
Nick Reistrum, City Engineer. Speaking in favor of this, this is work that is required to remain in compliance with our consent decree. It's for detecting and removing illicit connections to the sanitary sewer service, sewer system. That's a violation of the Clean Water Act. This money would be for, as I said, detection and elimination of those types of illicit connections.
Any other proponents? Any opponents? Any counselor? Counselor Guanasso?
Mr. President, it was my understanding that the amnesty program for this was already passed, and now this costs for those people or individuals who are reluctant to allow the service to be performed during a time basis, that now the homeowner would have to pay for this. And why are we paying $600,000 for this?
That's a good question. Nick, could you bring us up to date?
So the amnesty period of inspection is over. The construction related to the findings is not. And also, regardless of if there is amnesty, these types of connections still need to be detected, and they still need to be addressed. Now, those residents that are outside amnesty would have some responsibility in their removal. However, we still have to determine if there are connections and where they are, so that, you know, planning for that, those removals, can happen.
To the President, my point of contention is very simple. We had law-abiding citizens who wanted the word of our city and did what we've asked of them to do. There should be no period of time that's allowed for people who disobeyed the process and no sense of reward for this to continue, if in fact, we've already reached our amnesty point and it's over.
So the-
What message does that tell the people that helped and did the right thing for our city?
So the amnesty period, to be included in the amnesty program is over. However, the work related to those that were good citizens and came forward is not, has not been completed. As you can imagine, it's a significant amount of work to remove these types of connections. So I don't think that we're rewarding anybody for not complying. And in a lot of cases, we have to be able to determine these connections in order to then exact some type of fine, or, you know, have the people that are not in compliance address their situation.
Well, there is a process in place to do something like that. We do the work and we lean the property. That way, that way there, the taxpayer isn't paying for an additional source of, that they shouldn't be paying for.
Correct.
And we can lean the properties, and it's all within the provision of our laws.
But we still will need to identify those connections in order to then have, you know, legal action or whatnot.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Powers? Thank you, Mr. President. Nick, I have a couple of questions. What we're talking about here is people that have already stepped up to the plate before the amnesty program expired. Am I correct? And we're looking to-
In some cases, yeah.
Okay. And the other thing we're looking to do is locate people who did not step up to the plate, in which case, they would be responsible for taking, if they didn't come in during the amnesty program and we find illegal connections, then it would be up to them to pay, to have those connections corrected.
Correct.
Am I correct on both? Okay.
So in order to, again, in order to have residents that are not complying, address their issue, you know, on their own dime or whatnot, the city still has to identify that there is an illicit connection there. And so the illicit connection portion of it is what are the efforts around the city trying to get into the houses that we were unable to get into, to check illicit connections, if they exist, if they don't exist, and that type of thing. So we still need to identify those and also execute some type of a program to do these house-to-house investigations. It's very-
How far along are we now into that program of identifying illegal connections?
We've been into about 6,000 houses, I think, total.
And so we've got, what, another 8,000, 9,000?
Six or seven, maybe.
Really?
Depends. Yeah, I mean, there's about, I think, somewhere close to 12,000 structures, so.
And that's what this money will be used for, to identify them.
To identify them, yeah.
Okay.
That includes also some other, you know, there are some connections that the city is responsible for, such as catch basins and things like that. So it's to identify some of those types of connections as well.
And some of them that have been identified prior to the amnesty program expiring, that we need to take care of now.
Some of them, right, so some of them that are included in amnesty still need to physically be addressed.
Exactly. Thank you very much, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Patch?
Thank you, Mr. President. So Nick, are you saying that, first of all, who came up with this figure, $600,000?
Sorry about that. That's a playing level estimate that was done from the city's consultant, the program manager, CDM Smith.
Okay. So now, $600,000, you got me a little confused here. Are you saying that that's $600,000, it's just, if people, well, we had the amnesty, if people reported it during that time, I agree, we got to follow through and pay for that.
Right.
But I thought I could, almost as far as last year, we were, you already investigated the house, and so you should know how many people right now are under that amnesty.
So we haven't-
So how many people-
Go ahead, sorry.
Is this $600,000 going to pay for just people that you already recognize as during the amnesty period?
Some.
What do you mean, some? I mean, how can you make, come up with a figure of $600,000 if you, some?
Well, so, let me finish. So there is two aspects to this loan here. It's for eliminating illicit connections, finding them, okay? So finding these types of connections that need to be removed, and in some cases, removing them if they're city responsibility, but then also removing ones that have to be removed because they had been included in amnesty. We have been, like I said, into about 6,000 houses total, and so there's still a lot more that we haven't been able to get into, that we don't know if there are connections in there or not.
People that notified you during the amnesty period?
No, no, only the ones-
So what does that have to do with the $600,000?
So there's still illicit connections in houses where people didn't allow us in for amnesty.
So they have to pay for it. If you, if you go to the house, they got to pay for it.
That's right.
So that shouldn't be in the $600,000?
It costs money to investigate it, not to remove it.
Who have a worker go down and look in a house?
Right.
Now, you see why I called for an audit? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Novoselsky? Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, just a couple, hopefully, simpler questions. We're talking three phases, possibly three phases in this package. Taking care of the people that went through amnesty that we're paying for. And then there's the ones that have not gone through amnesty, but we still have to find some of them, okay, are the ones that are left, that haven't reported it. And that means doing smoke tests and stuff like that. Am I correct so far? Okay. And then there's the, and then there's the city portion that the city has to pick up the whole package. Whatever illicit connections there were, from catch basins going into sewer lines or whatever.
Right.
One question I have, does this include those homes that pump water onto the sidewalk into the catch basin?
No.
It does not include that. And how is that, something like that, handled?
So as far as the engineering department is concerned with the, that relation to the consent decree and also any illicit connections, they're discharging their water outside. It's not illegal to do that. Now, it is, I think, and I don't want to speak for the health department, but I think that discharge to the city, direct to the sidewalk, is, but that's not, that doesn't fall under my, you know, jurisdiction. So we're not addressing, we're not removing people's discharges from the sidewalk to somewhere else. If it's a legal connection, we're not spending money on it at all.
Okay.
It's the illegal ones that we're trying to address, because we're trying to remove flow from the system. So ones that are on the sidewalk that possibly ice up and things like that, that's something that has to be enforced through ISD.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Keefe?
Thank you, Mr. President. Throw you to Mr. Reistrum. You're a little bit, you're on the receiving end tonight from, I think, a lot of angst from the council. Respect, understandably, it's been years of approving millions of dollars, you know, and I've been on the council for two years, it almost seems, and it's not because of you, but there's some angst, you know, we have to approve $2 million, $3 million, $5 million, $300,000, and it seems to happen every couple of months, always revolving around the consent decree or some water issues. Can you just, can you just give us a little bit of insight, and this is more speaking on the whole, when will we stop talking about some pumps? When will we stop talking about drain connections? And then when will we start hearing the words, "Our flow to Deer Island is going down." Our flow as a whole is starting to, I guess, get better. When will we start seeing a little bit of relief? Because I feel for you right now, you, like I said, you're taking some blows and you're doing a good job of taking it, and I understand that, you know, every time the word, you know, CDM Smith is mentioned, a couple of us out here get a little tight, and I get that too, because of the money that we've seen go out. But when will we start hearing some of the good news, I guess? And we'd like to hear that. So could you give us some of that?
So I could tell you that there is a decrease in some of the flow that we've, that we're sending to Deer Island. Because it's such a slow process, you're taking out a some pump here, you're plugging a hole over here, you know, as you add those up, it becomes a big amount of flow. And then you can see over, over time, over, you know, years of that program, improvements and the effects on the discharge to Deer Island. I would love to say that you're not going to hear about this after two years from now, but that's just not the truth. There is a lot of these types of connections, and there's a lot of failing infrastructure that needs to be addressed. And that is not something that is easily done over a short period of time. The consent decree as it stands now is very aggressive in, you know, a timeframe of 10 years, and that's a hefty burden for the city to carry. We hope that that may change, but you're not going to see a immediate response because you're taking pieces, small pieces, out at a time. But we're seeing already that there is improvements, and that's really the important part. And if we, you know, if we stay that course, you will get to a point where a lot of that flow and the fees associated with it can be normalized. But unfortunately, it's some years away.
Thank you. And so, and then just, I guess, what I would like to see is, just come to us for, you know, whether it's the some pump program or whatever it may be, and I understand we did, we were pretty aggressive, and I saw houses with a smoke test, and I saw, you know, people saw alarms were going off, they thought, I mean, I thought my neighbor's house was on fire one day, it was pretty, it was pretty funny, because I was yelling at them to come to get out of the house. It was the smoke test. But I think as residents and people that, taxpaying residents of the city, would like to stop hearing about it and say, "All right, we got to that problem, we fixed it." You know, it'll never go away 100%, but we're pretty clear with that. We're not going to come back and ask for another, you know, $600,000 or next year, $1 million or whatever it may be. And then we can just keep moving forward with the next phase, whether it's, like I said, the sewer relining, et cetera, et cetera. But, so some pumps, we're going to address them this year, let's just say $600,000. We do, we do find some people maybe, and we have, and they pay for some of it. Are we coming back next year for another, I mean, just, most likely, you're going to come back at some point again for some pump.
I would say probably, yes.
Yeah, all right, just curious. Thank you.
It's, it's a very significant rampant problem, and a lot of it has to do with just the low-lying parts of the city. It's very easy and convenient to discharge to the sewer, but unfortunately, the federal government says it's illegal, so it's a big task to try to remove all of those connections, and it takes time, so.
One last question, so, thank you for your leniency. Is, do you see more people doing it, even though this was already done, some of these are old? Do you see more people doing it, like tomorrow, you own a house down the street, and you say, "You know what? I'm going to hook my some pump up illegally." Do you think it's still happening?
Yes.
So do you think that the city would be best interest to maybe have a department that does a really good job in making sure that it doesn't happen?
I think it would be good to be able to stay on top of those situations. I think there is the ability to include it in different types of inspections, you know, maybe during a property exchange-
Probably pay for itself.
Something like that.
Good.
But I think the first step is, and this is the important part in terms of the consent decree, is to get that flow out of the system initially. Now, are people going to put it back? We try to do the work so that they, they're deterred from doing that, because we don't take the flow out of the sewer and then, you know, let it flood their basement. We put it to somewhere else that it's equally easy, and it's a, it's a place where it's equally not a problem for them. So we hope that, that it happens, very rarely. I think that it probably does happen, although I haven't seen any evidence of it yet.
Roll call on the loan order?
Shall the City Council approve a loan order for CWSRF planning project number 4176 in the amount of $600,000 for illicit connection detection and some pump investigations? Counselor Janino is absent. Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch?
No.
No, Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo?
No.
No, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Haas?
Yes.
Yes, the loan order has been approved.
Roll call. Suspension rules, please. Suspension of the rules, what is it? Hope not prevail. You get that?
Yes.
Okay. Roll call and reconsideration. All those in favor? All those opposed? So voted. Roll call, vote on the resolution.
Shall the City Council approve the resolution for CWSRF planning project number 4176? Counselor Janino is absent. Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch?
No.
No, Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo?
No.
Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Haas?
Yes.
Yes, the resolution has been approved.
Mr. President, reconsideration, please. Hope not prevail.
Public hearing on Council Order 17-193, CWSRF planning project number 4183 in the amount of $1.2 million for Phase 9 II and IDDE.
Proponents?
Nick Reistrum, City Engineer. So this is planning money, this would pay for investigations for the city's main system to then determine rehab efforts the following year. So we would do investigations, say, for example, this summer, and those investigations would and those investigations would drive the construction work the following year.
Next year, okay. Any other proponents? They're being none. Any opponents? People against? They're being, they're being none, councillors? Charlie?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, we got a million and 200,000. Where's, who's, where's this money going?
It's investigation money, so it goes to...
Investigation money?
Yes.
Okay. What was it?
Okay, so it would go to pay for TV work related to the mainline pipes. It would go to identifying illicit connections to stormwater, the stormwater system, that's going to include dye testing and smoke testing and all those types of investigation work that needs to be done in order to identify deficiencies in the system and then be able to address them the following season.
So, this is Phase 9?
Correct.
Okay. How many phases are there?
There are as, as many phases as is needed to satisfy the consent decree.
So, this money is going to set, set degree?
I'm sorry, what's that?
This money is going to the, the pay for the fine, this money?
Yes. So, this is, this is directly related to consent decree work, yes.
All right. So, this is going to CDM Smith to investigate illicit discharge?
Some of it would, but it, most of it goes to the contractors that actually do that work. So, the CCTV contractors, the...
But the oversight, we got oversight too. Don't forget the oversight.
There's planning, it's planning.
Planning. They do the planning.
Right. So, the planning is done under the supervision of myself, the superintendent of public works, and in some cases, the city planner.
Now, how much left of the city is that they have to investigate? I mean, by the way, we're already over the 10 years, so how much, how much more? It took us to get to this point in 10 years. So, how much, how many, how many more years before we even get close to maybe being done with the oversight?
Sure. Just, Councilor Patch, with respect to the...
Identify yourself, please.
Sure, I'm sorry, Mr. President. Robert Button, CDM Smith, 75 State Street, Boston. With respect to the investigations and construction activity, we had a whole long presentation tonight that we didn't do because of the agenda, but has information that we've completed roughly 50% of the city through the first seven years of construction. And in our invest, negotiations with the state and the EPA to extend this consent decree so that it didn't cost so much every single year, we are going to complete the last 50% of the city in roughly a 10-year timeline. We did the first 50% in about seven years, and we'll do the last 50% of the lining and the, and the pipe rehabilitation work that you've all seen ongoing in your district in roughly the next 10 years.
Okay. One more question, Nick, and I'm sorry, I, I don't, I'm really not, I'm really trying to be patient here. I'm not, I'm, I'm not blaming you. If I do get a little upset, I apologize. But the taxpayers, they, they call, they, what they want to know. Now, we, two of the other, now, we used to have, correct me if I'm wrong, with the other two administrations, there was also another company, Brown and Carwell, they used to do some oversight work too, along with CDM Smith.
They did some...
They are no longer with us, correct?
They did some engineering work, yep.
So, we're down to one?
I don't think that they did, the only oversight that I'm aware of that they did was related to the pump station, the sewer pump station at the Point of Pines.
Oh. All right. Well, you know, I just, I just, I just don't get it. I just don't understand why we're dishing out so much money and why we have to rely on, on just one company. I just don't, maybe you've got an explanation for that. Wouldn't it be to the benefit of the city every, now, they've had it for 10 years now. Wouldn't it be, if, if, if we put it out for bid, maybe we could get a better deal?
The oversight?
Yeah.
So, I don't think that it's beneficial to have a different company doing oversight for someone else's design. The people that do the design have the, the best knowledge of that project, and it's really more efficient to have them do the oversight. So, for example, if I was going to do a design of a project, then I would want to be the one making sure that it was done properly. As far as the program management of the consent decree, I don't also think that it's beneficial to try to change gears, so to speak, right in the middle of the progress that we're making. I think that where the city is in a, a much better place with the regulators than it has been in the last five to six years, and I think that it would be beneficial to the city to continue, to continue down that path.
What is the, the breakdown of the oversight on this million, million two, million point two?
The, so it's roughly, like I said earlier, 10 to 15% of the, of that work. But this is a planning level, a planning contract, right? So, it's scheduling these inspections, it's keeping track of all of the results, it's lining up contractors to do CCTV work, it's reviewing the CCTV tapes and documenting what pipes and things like that need to be addressed and how they need to be addressed. It's lining up contractors to do smoke testing and to do dye testing and things like that. It's, it's, it's a complete management of those investigations, and it's all of the things that are involved in that.
So, you're saying they're, they're only getting 15% of this? If it comes back next year, next June when you come back?
Right.
You could, you could tell us that they only got 15% of this, 1.2 million dollars?
Next year when I come back, I can tell you what they got. I don't know what it's going to be, you know.
Why can't you tell us what they got last year?
I don't have those numbers with me, but we could.
Other cities have started with a, a design and, and let them, and let them go before the, the project was done. Is that correct? I mean, I know you, you have a...
What do you mean?
As far as, you just said that you, you believe that the person who designed it, you want to stay with them.
Right.
You, you don't, but I, if you Google, you Google it, I mean, there's other cities have, have started and, and let them, let them go if they didn't think they were getting good enough answers of what, how the money was being spent or, right? I mean, it's, other cities have done that.
Sure.
So, what, what, what's the problem with us not throwing this out to bid instead of coming back every, and see if we can get a better deal?
I think that you're going to end up having a contractor come in and almost start from scratch because you have all, you know, this way of doing things that maybe they want to change. They don't like this, they don't like that. I don't think it's, you know, unless there's some significant reason for doing that, I don't think it's beneficial to go in that direction.
You're correct, and, and I agree, I'm sorry, Mr. President, this will be it. I agree with you, but we, if, if, if we could get the answers, you know, I'm, like, I'm, I'm still saying, I don't know if anything is being misdone or something's not being done right. I just, I want to, I want to know where the money is going, that's all. I mean, I've been, I've been asking that for 10 years.
I can tell you that I'm doing my best to make sure that these, this work is being done properly. My interests lie with the city, and so what I like to see is that that work is done correctly and that it's documented properly and that we're maintaining compliance with the regulators and...
And I, and I, if, you're the engineer. If you, you think that, it's fine. But I, I want to know if we're overpaying or, or if, if, if we can get it done cheaper. I mean, there's a lot, there's a lot of questions here. It's been, there've been a lot of questions, and we, we don't get the answers.
I know that you...
And I'm getting frustrated. I think some of my colleagues are getting, even though they're not voting that way, are getting the, are getting frustrated about it. But, you know, I, I, I just don't, I just can't, year after year, especially after when I, I do my research and I, and I, and I look to other towns surrounding and what's, what's happening, and, and I just want to have some real, severe DBW oversight.
Okay, Charlie, that's, that's...
And is that enough?
You've had five minutes.
All right, I'm sorry, but I'm, that's my frustration, that's my, you're letting my frustration out.
Twenty-five minutes, yeah.
But I, and listen, I'm already on point on this, I believe me.
Councilor Guanasso?
Mr. President, I'm not going to belabor the subject any longer. Why we're having this discussion is very simple. To those people at home, they're saying, "Why so much detail put into this?" Because we're offering out the loan order tonight, 11.8 million dollars. It's almost 12 million dollars. So, what that does is it limits our borrowing power for future years. So, we should be concerned about how we're spending our money tonight for the future. And, and so, that's why a lot of this debate, and Nick, it's no reflection of you. As Councilor Patch alluded to several times, it's through three administrations, this is, and we're not picking on the current administration. This is just frustration of why this court decree has been so painful to us as ratepayers and taxpayers. This is getting out of control. But 11.8 million dollars tonight with no end in sight because I think we are into the 10th year of this, and we were told it was going to be a 100 million dollar project. Well, the mathematics, we've already probably exceeded that 100 million dollar court decree order, and I think that this is pretty painful. So, we, we want to work with you, and we, we know this needs to be done. So, bear up to it tonight because it's not your fault, and, and don't feel that way.
So, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Councilor Guanasso. Councilor Powers?
Mr. President, Nick, while we're on the subject of sanitary sewer lines and stormwater lines, okay? You mentioned the pump station, the sanitary sewer pump station down on the Lineway. What is the condition of the stormwater pump station on Rice Avenue? Number one, and number two, if you know there's a line, it may be a 16 or 24-inch line that runs from Pines Road to that stormwater that all of the other catch basins feed into. What is the condition of that line? Was that televised?
So, that line was televised two years ago, I believe. Turns out that it actually was in pretty good shape. It did have a good amount of sand and things like that in it that was cleaned out as a result of the TV. But I believe that we only located two significant deficiencies in that line. Now, the pump station is a little bit different. It's older. I'm not even sure when the initial construction was done, but it is something that needs to be addressed, and we're...
Have they plans to address that?
Yes. So, it needs to be investigated and looked at really with, you know, under a microscope to see what can be done with that station, what's the best way to address it that's beneficial to the Pines?
I've heard people call me at two different cases where that sewer line, the city has an easement through the yard in their driveway, and in some places, the driveway is sinking. And people are reluctant to go out and spend money to redo their driveway if they're going to have to have it dug up later on. So, my question, I guess the central question is, when do they anticipate making those corrections?
So, we're looking to, we, we already had started, like I said, we did some investigation for that line that goes through the houses. If there's someone, and this is sort of off, but if there's somebody that has mentioned to you that they have a problem in their driveway or whatnot, please direct them to me so that, you know, we can try to address that.
I will do that, yeah.
As of right now, I haven't had anyone come in and mention that to me, so, you know, whoever that is, have them, you know, talk to me. We're in the beginning stages of the, of looking at the pump station now. We sort of had a, a little bit of a hiccup because of the confined space entry that's required to get in and look at all of the underground parts of that pump station. But it's, it's in the works now in terms of address, assessing its condition and coming up with a solution to address it as a whole.
And there are sections along Rice Avenue that don't even have catch basins, where water accumulates in front of residents.
There are sections of all of the streets in the Pines that do not have drainage infrastructure at all. And so, a lot of the drainage infrastructure is centered around that cross-country line. And so, any of the further out parts of this, of the streets, they don't have that. And so, you have overland flow that doesn't have a catch basin.
You just have to wait till it dissipates?
Or until we are able to put in some infrastructure. When those streets were done, the infrastructure wasn't installed for, you know, one reason or another. Now, it's something that we have to address, you know, after the fact. So, there's a lot of effort involved there as well. But the stormwater issue is just as, if not bigger than the sanitary issue.
I, I agree with the money being spent now, if it's spent wisely, because five years from now, 10 years ago, we're going to be in the same boat that we're in now, where work wasn't done for 30, 40, 50 years on, on the infrastructure. And now, we're paying the piper, and it's costing a lot more now than it would have cost back then. So, I agree with doing the work now, as long as it's being done right and as long as it's being done efficiently in, in the best interest of the taxpayer. Thank you.
So, I think there's actually one more step to that. We're getting to a point where we're addressing a lot of these issues, but what needs to happen is that going forward, the maintenance and the upkeep of that infrastructure needs to be addressed on a regular basis, whereas previously, I don't think over some time it was. And so, it's similar to, you know, your car. You don't, you don't just drive it and ignore it, you know, you need to up, keep it up so that it doesn't just, you know, clunk out on you randomly. So, that's where, you know, part of, and a big part of it is to make sure that the maintenance and the operation of the system is continual going forward. And so, we're not in this situation, you know, 20 or 30 years from now.
I agree with you 100%. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Council, Council Rotundo.
I pass.
On the loan order, all those in favor? All those opposed? Roll call.
Shall the city council approve a loan order for CWSRF planning project number 4183 in the amount of 1.2 million dollars for Phase 9 II and IDDE? Councilor Gino is absent. Councilor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Novoselfski?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Patch?
No.
No. Councilor Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Rotundo? No. Councilor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. And Council President Haas?
Yes.
Yes. The loan order is approved.
Reconsideration, opposed? All those in favor of reconsideration? All those opposed? So voted. Vote on the resolution now? All those in favor? Roll call.
Shall the city council approve the resolution for CWSRF planning project number 4183? Councilor Gino is absent. Councilor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Keefe? Yes. Councilor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Novoselfski?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Patch?
No.
No. Councilor Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Councilor Rotundo? No. Councilor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. And Council President Haas?
Yes.
Yes. The resolution has been approved.
Reconsideration, please. Hope will not prevail.
All those in favor? All those opposed?
Mr. President?
Council Rotundo?
Time after time, we get requests for financing of various projects within the city, in particular regarding water. And, you know, we have a, an ordinance that before we vote on something, we're supposed to wait. What's the rule, Tony? Because I know you put it in regarding special permits and things of that nature and changes of the ordinance.
No, 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 that's not, that...
Which one am I trying to cite?
You're, you're trying to...
You're, you're trying to, the, whenever more than five thousand dollars is expended, it has to go for financial analysis. But this would not fall under that because there's been a financial analysis-
Not, well-
-on the fact that, that's the way I read it now.
Right, and it's not being presented-
You've got a lawyer, you've got the finance director here, you can go to them. If you're looking for my opinion, this doesn't fall into the five thousand dollar rule.
Well, see, for me, it does, and my thought is, we should have a, a full analysis. The CDM is doing an analysis and providing it to Nick Greystrom.
That's, that's out of order. Charlie's gonna address that after the meeting. Thank you. Moving on.
Council Order seventeen dash one ninety-four, hearing called is ordered on CWSRF project number four one four nine in the amount of four point seven million dollars for Phase Eight II, IDE, PS, and drainage construction.
Any opponents, up, proponents?
Nick Greystrom, City Engineer. This funding is for construction work. It's sort of the opposite of the planning work. When we do planning work, we determine, we identify all these deficiencies and things of that nature, and then the construction monies is to pay to address those. Rehab for sewer lines, rehab for pump stations, things of that nature. That's what this would be. This would include, similar to the construction monies from earlier, this would include the construction itself, the bulk of it is the construction itself, but then it's also details, and there's some contingency in there, and things like that. So this would be for the construction, the physical construction portion of the sewer system rehab.
Right. Any other proponents? There being none, any opponents? Any councils like to speak? Charlie?
No, I'll just say, I have to say what I said before. I'll, I still don't, I'd like to know where it's going and how it's spent, and just, maybe they're stupid questions, but I, I just, I just have them, and I'll, I guess I'll always have them. But I'm voting no, so.
Counsel Powers?
Thank you, Mr. President. Nick, this money, is any of this money, you, you mentioned sewer, sanitary sewers, is any of this money being used for the reconstruction of catch basins throughout the city?
Um, so in places where it's related to- Sorry about that. In, in places where it's related to the consent decree, the sewer system and things like that, yes. So if that's something that needs to be addressed, then that's something that we would, it, I would, don't make, no, make no mistake, it's not, it wouldn't be a situation where you just can pick a catch basin to fix, you know? If it was not related to-
What if it's, what if it's sinking a foot, or sixteen inches, or something like that, and in danger of a cog going into it, or a kid getting hurt?
So that's not, this money's not approved for that type of work unless it has a relation to the sanitary work that is mandated under the consent decree.
Now, my next question is, is there any money that they're looking to spend to do that?
I believe that the DBW has a contract. I'm not sure what the budget looks like, but I know that there was a contract last year to repair catch basins. I would imagine that there would be a similar contract this year.
Would you have that priority list?
Would I have the priority list of the catch basins?
Where you're the City Engineer?
I have the, I have list of catch basins that I received from DBW prior to that, prior to that contract.
Okay, because I put in a motion last week for three or four of them that need to be done.
Okay.
And they're really bad.
I don't, I haven't seen-
I think it's related.
I haven't seen that, the list that you're talking about, but if it's one that falls within the scope of this work, then it's one, they're ones that we can address.
All right, thank you.
And if they don't, it's something that maybe needs to be addressed by the-
Needs to be addressed, that's the bottom line.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. Not necessarily here, that's all.
Thank you.
Any other counselor? There being none, Nick, I get it. About the audit, do we have to perform?
The audit?
Yeah. EPA.
The consent decree?
Yeah.
So right now, we're up over a hundred million dollars.
And this is eleven point eight-
Right.
Million of-
So believe it or not, this is actually a smaller number than you've seen in the past. All, and all of it is because it's required for compliance by the regulators. So it's not work that we, I mean, we would wanna do it, but it's not work that we maybe would choose to do at this rate if there wasn't, you know, federal regulators essentially forcing us to do it.
Yeah, but as the council's been saying, you're bankrupting the taxpayers revere. A hundred million dollars spent over eight years so far? That's a lot of money, that's a lot of money.
Mr. President?
I agree.
Counsel?
I remember this was supposed to be a hundred million dollar project when it first started.
Yeah, exactly.
And every single time, you guys wanna continue to fund this without an oversight, without having an audit, plain and simple. If you wanna keep on spending the people's money, just keep on doing it. You're doing a great job, guys.
Put, put a motion in charge to do it.
How many times do I gotta do this, Bob, and you just ignore it, or?
Point of information, point of information.
Charlie?
Uh, I was gonna wait till after all these, because I know that the way it's voting, it's not, nothing's gonna change here tonight. So, um, I've had a motion, a motion in that my, all my colleagues voted in for it. It was an audit for CDM Smith, and we sent it to the mayor. The mayor came back, asked a question. We answered the question, we voted on it again, and then it was unanimous, and there it's been. I wanna put a motion in tonight that, that we get an answer on this motion. We'll give them a couple, a few months, maybe by, by August, we get, is that enough time? Or that too much time? September, September first, all right? That we get an answer from the mayor by September first, and from the, the state, pardon me?
The state auditor.
The state, from the state auditor, it was supposed to have been a, I, I, correct me if I'm wrong, Madam Clerk, there was a letter sent to the state auditor, and that was months, right, months ago?
There was no contact from the state auditor after the letter was sent?
There's been no contact, no, so I would, I'd put in the motion that there'd be some communication with the mayor's office to the state auditor to find out if, if we can get that audit done, or if we have to go private to get some company in here. That I'd gladly, I'd gladly vote yes for that money. I'd make, I'd make that motion. Thank you. Should we vote on it now, please? Bob?
Counsel Patch's motion, roll call.
Can I, can I hear what the motion actually is? Can somebody read it?
That the mayor be requested to contact the state auditor and have a response from them by September first for an audit relative to CDM Smith.
Mr. President, Charlie, if you don't mind, I'd like to amend that, not for September first. We have the ability to send a letter to the state auditor as well, as a body. I'd like to do that as well, and I'd like to do that by July first, as well as have the mayor contact the state auditor by July first, not waiting till September. There's no purpose in that at this point. You know, this is the third time we've asked for this. Third time.
Counselor Rotundo's amended motion, roll call.
On the motion, Counselor Gino is absent. Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keith?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Haas?
Yes.
Yes, the oral motion of Counselor Patch, as amended by Counselor Rotundo, has been approved.
Reconsideration, hope that does not prevail.
Can we-
You never know, you never know.
Do you have to reconsideration?
Counselor Rotundo.
Through you, may I ask a member of the audience a question?
There's nothing on the floor right now.
I know we're under suspension of rules, I, I'd like to ask a question.
Go ahead.
Through you, to Joe Maglione, who's here, I'd like to know if it would be possible for the DPW-
Excuse me, Mr. President, would you have, the gentleman's gonna answer the question, would you have him come up to the podium?
I'd like to finish my-
Yes.
I'd like to know if the DPW would be capable of handling the oversight of the project that I'm sure you were watching on TV.
Yes, we would be. We've done inspections for water and sewer for over twenty years. I've put in water and sewer in these city for many years. As far as doing the inspections on the installation of the water lines, there is ah, no problem with us doing it whatsoever.
Through you, Mr. President, is this no different than new construction on a home, per se, the same formality?
Same formality.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Joe, I have a question while you're up here at the podium. May I, Mr. President?
Go ahead.
I think during the past three recent heavy rain events, down at the corner of Sagamore Street and Naponton Street, we've had a tremendous amount of rain, standing, standing rain in front of people's homes. What are we doing to correct that, and what needs to be done to correct that now?
Well, as you know, I went down there, I told you-
I know you did, I'm sorry, Tom.
I promised to investigate it, and we're pretty sure we can fix that intersection. We're putting in roughly eighty feet of pipe. It's not gonna solve the problem, but it would help it drain quicker. Until we get that county ditch straightened out, it's not gonna be a full relief of it, but it would definitely help. And I was told to hold off on doing the work.
Who told you to hold off?
Superintendent.
Okay. Then maybe my question should be to him.
And also, and also, when getting to the answer to your drain station, the Port of Pines, one of those pumps have been down for a great deal of time, and I made people aware of it. I got a quote to have the pump pulled, be checked, and researched how much it would cost to fully put it back in place, and as yet, I've never got an answer back, whether to make, call the company and have them pull the pump.
Who would do that? Hall pump?
Hall's pump did the last time, they rebuilt it.
Okay.
My men are quite capable of doing this work. We need more manpower in my department.
I realize that, that's, that's why-
I'm down from twelve down to five.
I realize that, that's why I, I think right now that your department could not handle any of this other work if we-
When I had the men, I did full inspections.
When you had the work, yeah, okay, okay. Now, so what do we need dollar-wise to correct that problem down on Sagamore Street and Naponton Street?
Roughly the price of the pipe is gonna be five hundred or under, plus our manpower to do the work.
Okay, and you were told to hold, hold up on that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much.
Counsel Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr.- Thank you, Mr. President. Joe, I'm, I'm just trying to clear this up. I, I never doubted the fact that your men are capable of oversight on a construction project. That's what you'd do. If you weren't, there'd be something wrong there. But you just, you just told us that you need more men. I don't know how you can dedicate men full-time to a construction project. That's, that's less men you're gonna have to do the work that you need to do. Am I, am I not correct in assuming that?
You don't need a man there full-time. When the job is complete, if it's excavated, they come, you come inspect it, see what they put in for stock, and then you, they rebuild it. And that takes a matter, that takes a matter of fifteen minutes.
So you're saying you don't need a resident engineer in the job?
You don't need someone on site at all times, no.
That's, that's not what I'm familiar with, with road construction, so I disagree.
Road construction and doing a service is totally different.
You still got an open trench, and you're installing pipe, and somebody needs to be to see that it's done properly.
Not doubting your background in construction, but I've been doing water and sewer for over thirty years.
I understand that, I understand.
And I did it before I came to the city.
So you're telling me that you can take from your manpower to do these projects? From what you have now?
I can take from my manpower to do the inspections, oversee the inspections on these water lines? Absolutely.
No additional men?
No, not to do the inspections on the services.
And not on overtime?
Not in overtime, whatever the contract gets done.
Okay.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
I appreciate that.
Thanks for coming up.
And also, I'd like to find out when they go out to bid, if they're gonna see how many, when they go out to bid, how many of these contracts they're gonna use trenchless technology to pull lines through instead of excavating the whole street? Has anybody looked into that? I'm all to bet you doesn't. They're thinking excavating the whole street, but a lot of lines could be pulled without digging the whole street.
Mr. President, Joe?
Before you leave, Joe, Joe, before you leave, if I may? Joe, we have a situation down behind the Garfield School collapsed line, can you tell me what's going on with that?
Yes, we ordered the pipe for there. We were asked to move out of there during the construction of the school, so we're gonna try to wait till they're out of school, so possibly we can do it during the week, or on a Saturday, when the children are out of school. I already ordered the pipe, it's on site.
Do you know the status of the work on the MBTA property?
The MBTA, I haven't been involved in any of the meetings with the MBTA. They did some work on the trench, but they never excavated over as far as where the outlet of the pipe is. I'm not privy to go to those meetings no longer.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Counsel Morabito had a question, Joe?
Mr. Maglione, Mr. Maglione, I have a question, sorry. Everyone's hitting you up with questions. I figured I might as well ask one. Thurlow Ave, right, at the bottom, whenever it rains, it just all sinks to the bottom. If a car goes through, it literally, if the car's body's low enough, it will kill the engine. Is there anything that we can do about that?
I can look into it, first I'm hearing of it.
Okay. I'll contact you later in the week.
No problem.
Thanks.
Mr. Maglione, thank you for coming here. I'm just curious, I, I don't, I don't know you very well, I've heard, every time I've heard your name, everyone said you're the master of the water in the city, and pipes in the city, so I've heard that a lot, so. Do you think that this is money well spent on these, these loan approvals?
A lot of it is, a lot of it, you need that expertise of other people, absolutely. But where money can be saved, I think can save, because I'm also a taxpayer, and I have a lot of family that do pay taxes also.
Absolutely.
Because I, I, I do agree, you know, and I've heard from the DPW, and I think it's obviously a separate issue than this, there needs to be more funding towards that, and most likely more staffing, having five people when you used to have twelve. We've had, we have water main breaks every winter, and I can only imagine that takes your whole crew out. But I just wanted to know, you know, do you think it's money well spent? I've been on the council two years, a lot of these councils have been sick and tired of continuing to approve this money. I've only been here two years, and I'm already sick and tired of approving the money, and I'm hearing that we're gonna be doing this for another eight years. I'm not happy about that, but I just wanted to-
It's work, it needs to be done, it's long overdue.
It needs to be done.
It is long overdue, the work.
I appreciate that, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr.? Mr. President? Joe, I was gonna let you go, but I, I know you were probably watching on TV, and, and you, you might see my frustration here on the, the oversight of these jobs and the, and how I felt that the DPW could, could handle it. But, you know, we.
There's a lot of it we can, I'll be honest, there's a lot of it we can't do.
I understand.
We'll admit to what we can't handle.
Yes, but.
But anybody working on our system, that it's in the ground, we are the guys that are on the street are going to be dealing with, when everybody walks away.
Right. I just feel that we are paying much too much for this work year after year. Especially on the design and oversight part of it. I know we got to do the work, and that's why the only one I voted on tonight was the lead replacement, because that has to be done. I still think that's overpriced, but. So I, hopefully, we'll get an answer with the, we'll get an audit done, and we'll get, we'll get some answers. Maybe I'm wrong, but at least we'll get some answers.
That's why I asked the question.
I appreciate you coming down tonight, thank you.
That's why I asked the question about trenchless work on these water lines, too. Cuts the price down tremendously. And if any of you ever want to take a tour with me, I'd be more than welcome to give you a tour.
Mr. President.
Counsel Guanasso.
Joseph, every single time I've had the opportunity to need your services, you've been right by my side. And certainly, some of the questions offered out this evening by my colleagues, certainly are genuine. You certainly come to the podium, stating exactly what you know, and somewhat in frustration in your appearance here tonight. And it doesn't go unrecognized by this body, we certainly appreciate, when we call you, Joe Maglione is there, helping us. And we really applaud you for your services.
I thank you, and my men appreciate it, because my men try to do the best they can for the city.
Absolutely, and I see you out there in frigid weather, and I see you out there in heat waves, so.
I'm only as good as my men, and I have a good bunch of guys, and they want to do anything.
And compliments to you and your group.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe, thanks for coming, I appreciate it. Thank you. Any other proponents? Any opponents? Any councils in the 4.7 million? Roll call for the loan order.
Shall the City Council approve a loan order for CWSRF project number 4149 in the amount of $4.7 million for Phase 8 II, IDE, PS, and drainage construction? Counselor Gino is absent, Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch?
No.
No, Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo? No, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Haas?
Yes.
Yes, the loan order has been approved.
Roll call, reconsideration.
Reconsideration, hopefully it does not prevail. All those in favor, all those opposed, so voted.
Roll call, vote for the resolution.
Shall the City Council approve the resolution for CWSRF planning project number 4149? Counselor Gino is absent, Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito? Yes, Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch?
No.
No, Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo? No, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Haas?
Yes.
Yes, the resolution has been approved.
Reconsideration has been applied, all those in favor, all those opposed, so voted.
Council Order 17-195, hearing called is ordered on CWSRF construction project number 4148 in the amount of $2 million for the illicit connection and sump pump removal program.
Any proponents?
Nick Reistrung, City Engineer. Again, this, in contrary to the planning monies, this is construction monies. And so this is strictly for the actual construction of these types of illicit removals. It also includes, to some degree, installation of new infrastructure in order to accommodate the removals, if that's needed.
There being none, any opponents, people against it? There being none, any counselor?
Why are you looking at me, Mr. President?
Ms. McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion that we look at, we can't do that? Oh, speaking, okay, can I make a motion afterwards?
No, I just have the same, I won't bother taking the time of the people here, I have the same argument, thank you.
You know, I have one question to Mr. Reistrung, or to anyone that, anyone that can answer, thank you, Mr. President. You know, so just talking to one of the professionals, Mr. Maglione, he did mention that it's work that needs to be done, and I asked him if it was money well spent, he did agree. Not to put him on the spot, but that was one of the, I mean, he seems to be a pro. And I know that he's not a budget, you know, he doesn't know every penny. Just because we approve this money, there's no guarantee that it's all being spent, one, correct?
Correct.
And two is, there's no guarantee that CDM Smith is going to manage this money?
Correct.
Okay, so, and I'm not saying anything about CDM Smith, but if this is work that needs to be done, I think that I want to give the mayor, or whoever, the engineering department, or the city, the resources to get the job done. If they, if we decide as a council that whatever company is overseeing that is doing the wrong job in July, or if we find out before then, then we can pull that back and say, you know what, we're going to find a better company to deal with this project, and we'll use the money towards that. If we can decide in the next few months, or even throughout the year, because I doubt that this money is all going to be spent in the next few months, that they can do a better drain laying system with some advice from professionals like Mr. Maglione, then maybe we should, you know, get a little bit more involved in that. But we're getting a little huffy-puffy eight years into it. I mean, so, maybe we should have thought of that seven years ago, six years ago, five years ago, four years ago. It's just a little weird that it is, it is getting so extenuating tonight. I don't know why, I'm not happy about it, but. I was, I was going to vote no on the rest of these projects, if he came up here and said that it wasn't money well spent, and if it wasn't necessary work. I would have said nope to the next two, two projects.
Point of information?
I will vote for them.
I believe, I don't want, I don't want to put. No, no, I, I don't, I, I agree that the work has to get done. We were told by the federal government, the work has to get done. And I believe Joe said, said that. My problem is with the oversight and design of the project. That has nothing to do with the actual work of the project.
And I am in favor of that with you, and I will, I will be in part with you and any other counselors that want to take the chief engineering process into account, and look at who's overseeing this project. I would be in favor of that as well. But voting on this money, to me, isn't the same as voting on a company. That's a whole separate issue, in my opinion, maybe not yours, but mine.
Rotundo.
$100 million is a lot to be a little upset over. People are paying probably just as much for their water and sewer right now as they did for their, their taxes probably several years back, and they're getting no relief whatsoever. Frankly, you know, we follow a standard, and I know Counselor Zambudo disagrees regarding ordinance, you know, 212130 for financial impact statements for $5,000. But yet, time after time, they come before the council asking for millions of dollars, and yet, we don't have any delineated information regarding scope of work or anything of that nature. And yet, we're told only 50% of the city is done, yet we have a massive GIS, you know, system that can tell you how many, how many streets we have, how many main lines we have, how many catch basins we have, where were the storm surge, infiltration took place down at Town Line Brook and other places throughout the city. You know, we have all this information, but yet we don't have the ability to delineate on GIS, which I think Solom might have, I'm sure Mr. Buttons might have, because he's doing the assessments, that we should have that before you even step forward. You know, you're asking for, for means of dollars on behalf of the people, tens of millions of dollars on behalf of the people, and yet we're getting nothing in return, other than just documentation that, oh, we need this money. You know, at the end of the day, I'd like to have a line item as to what it's going to be used for. And we should have a semblance of knowledge as to where we are on our GIS. And if not, I want to know why not. Because if not, that's kind of fraudulent in my mind, or at least it's just not, and maybe fraudulent's not the right word, but it's just not, not appropriate in my mind. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Some of us, and you were one of them, eight years ago or 10 years ago, were screaming pretty loud about the federal government and an unfunded mandate that they stuck on us. Now, the last thing I ever want to do is vote for $11 million to, for infrastructure. But we are mandated to do that. And I know that especially seniors, but almost every taxpayer is suffering with the water and sewer bills. We don't do this with any, any pleasure. I voted for this audit of CDM Smith, and I did so because I want everything to be transparent up here. But I also want a professional company designing and overseeing this work that we're spending millions of taxpayers' dollars on, and because we're forced to do it. So that's where we're at here, and nobody, especially not me, doubts that our water and sewer department is as good as any city in the whole state. I watch what they do, I see when they're out there in the freezing cold, and they never, they never stop working. They're always working through the night to stop these ridiculous leaks, and we, you know, the the guy that knows more about infrastructure in this city than anybody knows that this work needs to be done. And we can't keep having sewer overflows and all that stuff. So it's painful, none of us like doing it, but we're forced to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel.
Point of information?
State your point, Mr. Powers. Mr. Patch.
Thank you. To Counsel Keefe, my frustration is not only been for a year, it's been for 10 years. And I also, you know, if, if my fellow counselors are comfortable approving millions upon millions without answers, that's fine, but I just, I just can't do it tonight, and I'm not, I'm not going to, I'm not going to. I just, it's not, I just.
It's not a point of information.
I'm just, I'm just.
It's not a point of information. Counsel Zambudo. Okay, Powers, Counsel Powers.
Yes. Nick?
You want to speak?
What I'd like to see in the future is, when you come up here, or the administration comes up here, looking for a million dollars to do this, or $2 million, I'd like to know specifically what area, what streets are being done, and what function is being done. Is it relining, is it laying new pipe, is it working on pump stations, whatever it might be? I'd like to know, if we're going to do Bellingham, Brad Street, and Crest Avenue, and you're coming up here looking for a million dollars, I'd like those streets outlined, just as if you would if you were doing Naponton Street and Dunn Road and Sagamore Street. And I, I think that's what frustrates some of the counselors up here, that, and I'm not blaming you, and I'm not even blaming this administration, this has been going on for eight years. And I'd like, I'd also like to know how much of that money has been spent over each year. But I'd like to see something in writing. I'd like to know that when they're coming up to do a certain section of streets, those streets are outlined, cost is outlined, and the, and the work program is outlined, what they're going to do. They're going to lay 1,000 feet of sewer pipe, 6-inch sewer pipe, 8-inch sewer, whatever it might be. I'd like to know. And then I'd feel a little more comfortable, you know, voting for some of this stuff. But I'll be honest with you, I don't really feel completely comfortable that I'm voting for this, because a man like Mr. Maglione says the work has to be done. You agree with that?
Absolutely.
Yeah. So, but I'd like to, you know, let them be a little more descriptive of what work is being done. And I think we'd all feel a little better.
Just keep in mind that the work that will be laid out, for example, for next year, will be determined by the investigations that will occur at the beginning of the fiscal year. So when we do the planning and the investigations through the summer, then we're able to determine what those impacts are, and what the rehab corrections are for the next, the next year. And that's, if you've seen some of the packets that I handed out earlier, what's laid out there is all of the work that's scheduled for this year, where it is, you know, what type of work that is. And that's all informational for you, but just to keep in mind that the investigations are what drives, what then gets.
I think we just like a little more information, and I think we feel more comfortable at that point.
Thank you, Counsel Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Counsel McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. President. As Mr. Maglione said, this work that can be done by the Water Department, and we could probably save some money by them doing it, and I want to, I would like to make a motion. Now, can I make my motion now? Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we, the administration, take a look at what work the Water Department can do, and what, and if they can't do it, then we, we go to CDM. But I think that if, if they're capable of doing, you know, inspections or whatever, and we're going to save some money on it, I think we should allow them to do it. Thank you.
On the motion by Counselor McKenna and by Counselor Morabito, that the mayor be requested to examine what work the DPW is capable of performing, I guess in terms of the loan order, or in terms of the consent decree? Okay, in terms of the CWSRF loan orders? Counselor Gino is absent, Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Haas?
Yes.
Yes, the motion has been approved.
Okay. Speak, Mr. Novoselsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, it stated we're spending approximately $11 million, a little more. And we've been doing this, like, it's been said in the past, over 10 years. I remember when it started, I remember when they came in with the consent decree. Now, if we didn't do all this, imagine the fines we're going to be having to pay and not getting the work done. This is very important stuff to do. Granted, it costs a lot of money, but we would, the taxpayers would still be paying high rates and getting nothing done if we did nothing, just on fines. Because that's where it would go into their water rates. So it's important that we pass these and make sure the work gets done. In relation to the DPW folks doing the work, you know, it hasn't been mentioned before, but in this past budget, we put, I believe, seven people to be hired for water enterprises in that department. And here it is, coming to the end of the budget, and not one person has been hired of those seven. We've replaced people that have left, but if we put those seven people on, that issue would have been resolved as far as the DPW guys being able to do some of the work on their time. You know, I know, you know, I've been holding back on this, I've mentioned it to other people. It's been said because of the HR department that we haven't hired, we're put together yet. But I think it's important that we start working on putting those guys on board and getting some relief to the workers that are in the DPW now. So I think it's important that we vote on this and pass it and move on. Thank you.
I just have one question, Nick. Could you come up, Nick? The consent decree was $100 million, zero boats. What have we spent to date?
So that's where we're at about. When the estimates were done originally, and I was not involved in those, but I think that when those were done, the magnitude of the problem in the city was not fully realized. As we have gone through and done some investigations and done some improvements, we've determined that it's much, it's a much bigger problem than was initially thought. And that's why I think you see the significant increase in the amount of money that's required to address the city as a whole. If I'm not mistaken, that was one of the arguments that the city posed to the regulators that said, you know, we don't even know what the full extent of the problem is, how can you tell us to fix it if we don't know that yet? And so I think in there is where some of this, some of the problem and some of the confusion lies.
I know you've been in, the city's been in contact with Elizabeth Warren and Ed Maki. I've heard their names batted about. Do you know if they have sat down with them to discuss?
So I have not had any contact with either of them. I'm not sure who, with the city has spoken to them, but it wasn't me.
Okay. What do you think the balance is of the decree ought to, as of right now?
I mean, I think that we might be.
It's an estimate, without question.
Yeah, maybe close to halfway.
Halfway?
I mean, it's hard, like I said, it's hard to say, but the amount. I mean, it's hard, like I said, it's hard to say, but the amount of neglect in the system and all the deficiencies are, is significant, and it's very, um, expensive to try to remedy an entire system of sewage and stormwater.
Which is neglected to 100 years.
Yeah, 70, 80 years.
Yeah, 70, 80 years. Okay. Thank you, Nick. Uh, on the motion? Roll call on the loan order.
Shall the City Council approve a loan order for CWSRF construction project number 4148 in the amount of $2 million for illicit connection and sump pump removal program? Counselor Genino is absent. Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch?
No.
No, Counselor Powers?
Is absent.
Counselor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Haas?
Yes.
Yes, the loan order has been approved?
On immediate reconsideration is, does not help to prevail. All those in favor, all those opposed, so voted. On the resolution, a roll call on the resolution.
Shall the City Council approve the resolution for CWSRF construction project number 4148? Counselor Genino is absent. Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch?
No.
No, Counselor Powers is absent. Counselor Rotundo?
No.
No, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Haas?
Yes.
Yes, the resolution is approved.
Reconsideration, please. And hope this does not prevail. All those in favor, all those opposed, so voted. Mr. President, can I, I'd like to file a reconsideration on, uh, construction project 4202. I don't believe we, uh, we did that. Yep. On reconsideration? Hopefully it does not prevail. All those in favor, all those opposed, so voted. Yeah, we have to ask the audience to leave. We will be going into executive session.
Point of order, why are we going into executive session?
It's a motion.
Huh?
It's your motion.
Yeah, no, no, I understand. It's my motion. I asked a simple question as to, I mean, is this an issue of litigation?
Yeah.
Thank you for letting me know.
Okay. Take her. On the issue, there's one issue before we go into executive session. Uh, city water meter and sewage system, okay? One minute. Late, yeah, in a second.
There's a late communication relative to various contract extensions regarding, uh, the water meter program contracts.
Not yet, after this.
Okay, yes. Um, on. Uh, this is the extension, we need the extension of contracts for the, what, pardon?
This is executive.
Okay.
Frank, you can stay here.
So.
Judge.
Okay.
Not, not yet. Okay.
So what we're doing here is we're asking for an extension so that we can be in accordance with, uh, chapter 30B of contracts that cannot go beyond a three-year period unless with the approval of the council. And what we're asking for is the, uh, this is the meter reader projects, excuse me, new meter project that we're looking at. Uh, and there are four different contracts that we need to be extended because a number of people, in fact, today, I think the figure was almost 1,000, we had a meeting today, that did not, uh, have a new meter put into their home. Um, we're going to be taking care of that by passing some ordinances, which we worked on today, and then, uh, looking at how that can be corrected. But a number of people did not respond. Uh, we've done a number of things. We've sent out a $5,000 fine to nonresponders. We've also sent out a shut-off letter to some 405, uh, ratepayers. Uh, so what we need to do in order to finish this project is to extend these contracts to a certain years. The water meter supply contract, as you can see, is to June 1st, 2018. The AMI system contract to June 1st, 2018. The, uh, CDM Smith agreement to October 1st, 2018. And the CDM agreement for GIS AMR planning contract extended to December 31st, 2018. Uh, we need these in place in order to get the water meter system completed so that we can automatically read everybody's water meter in the city. Uh, we are down to the last about 8%, and, uh, these are the ones that we're gonna have to, uh, try our hardest, give much more effort in order to get them installed. Okay. Do you have any questions? We'd be glad to answer them.
Oh, uh, Mr. Novoselsky?
I know we had to extend another contract a couple of weeks ago. Is it gonna cost us any extra money?
No, it's just gonna, it's part of the contract.
So it's just extended the same money, extending the time?
Right.
Thank you.
I have one question, Judge. With the new system going in, are we gonna still have the use of the outside water meters?
Uh, I, there hasn't been any, uh, decision to not use the outside water meters, so I would say yes.
I mean, I think that's a big thing for the taxpayers, you know, to fill the pools, gardening, et cetera, you know, to not be paid for the surge.
Right.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions?
Just a point of information. I think we've, they've ordered some outside meters. Okay.
All those questions asked, roll call.
Shall the City Council approve the contract extensions for the following four contracts? Water meter supply contract number MUN-2013-1021A, extended to June 1st, 2018. Contract number two, AMI system, contract number MUN-2013-1022, extended to June 1st, 2018. Contract number three, CDM Smith agreement for AMR projects, contract number DPCD-2013-105, extended to October 1st, 2018. And the last contract, CDM Smith agreement for GIS AMR planning, contract number DPCD-2013-106, extended to December 31st, 2018.
Roll call.
Counselor Genino is absent. Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Haas?
Yes.
Yes, the contracts have been extended.
Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen.
It's up to you guys. Council President Haas, prior to going into executive session, there needs to be a roll call vote in order to enter into executive session.
Yes.
What is the purpose for going into executive session?
To discuss legal litigation.
Yeah, that's what, the recycling program.
Are you coming out to the vote?
Yeah, exactly.
Regarding the program?
Yeah. Okay.
Well, I'm not sure if we are taking any votes there.
Just informative meeting.
That's in executive session.
Yeah.
Bye.
Roll call, we're gonna executive session.
On the roll call to enter into executive session, Counselor Genino is absent. Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Haas?
Yes.
Yes, the City Council shall now enter into executive session.
City Council will reconvene at this point in time. Unfinished business, 17143.
Unfinished business, communication from the mayor requesting a residency waiver for Tab Ben Wait, public safety information technology professional.
Mr. President, thank you, uh, for the opportunity to speak to the council this evening. Uh, there are two items on the agenda, I believe, related to residency. I had sent, uh, communication asking to, to take a little bit of time tonight to discuss, uh, the residency issue and waivers and all that fun stuff that has been a hot topic of conversation over the last couple of weeks. And I guess I'll start by talking about, uh, some of the things that we're doing in terms of HR and in terms of policies and procedures that we're putting in place to make sure that we do, at the end of the day, get the most qualified and best workforce possible. Um, I know that we're all here, uh, you're here tonight, and you're spending a, a late night here, uh, and I'm here every day, uh, to make sure that we provide the best services to the city. And the way that I can do that, and the best way I can do that, as, uh, chief executive of the city, is to hire the best and brightest to come work for the city. Uh, so that's why HR and policies and procedures and a process in terms of hiring people was put in place, and it was something that's been a priority that I've talked a lot about. Um, and, and actually, that's a reason why I wasn't here two weeks ago to talk about, um, the individual who was, uh, brought before you, because there was a hiring committee. That hiring committee was comprised of public safety officials, fire, fire and police, uh, folks in the fire and police department, uh, folks in RIT, uh, um, department, and in the school IT department, who have very, very, uh, clear and, um, uh, deep knowledge of the things that we're gonna need out of somebody who was gonna do public safety IT work. Um, and I have faith in that process. I, and, and there, I'll talk a little bit about why I know that it's working. But what I wanted to make sure that we talked about tonight were some of the things that were said two weeks ago, because there were a couple of quotes and a couple of things that were said that were blatantly inaccurate and false. And I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page. And if we're gonna have a conversation about, uh, residency and about waivers and about the workforce of the city, that we have it open, openly, we have it in an honest conversation, and that we have a transparent conversation. I don't have anything to hide. And there are two things that I want, um, to make sure that are cleared up, because I've heard, um, I heard two things, quote, you know, that, that I was quote-unquote "hiring more and more people from outside the city." That was said. And I also heard that I am quote-unquote "constantly asking for waivers." Those two statements are inaccurate. And what I did, uh, was put together a little packet of information about the folks who work in the city, uh, and about residency, and you'll see some of the, the facts, some of the data that's actually, um, proves that these statements are blatantly incorrect. Um, if you look at what I, what I've provided to you, I have hired, uh, since January 2016, 39 people. Thirty-seven of those people reside in the city of Revere. That means that I've got two waivers. There were two people that I hired who are currently not living in the city. And there's one thing that I, I wanna talk a little bit about, because the fact is that, uh, you may not know all of those people that I hired. And there are some of those people that I didn't know before I hired them. And when I talked to those people, uh, it was, it was interesting, because time and time again, people would say, you know, I never thought about working for the city, because I thought that those, I assumed that those jobs were already, already, uh, kind of set aside for somebody. I assumed that, that it wasn't a fair process, and I assumed that it was just a friends and family kind of thing, and that there isn't a process that people have to go through to get hired in the city. And that is why I made sure that we have that process set up, and that's why I wanted to make sure that you, we are getting the most qualified and the best and brightest. And I can tell you that those, that process and, and having HR, having an HR consultant and, and hiring a full-time HR director is working, because we see more and more resumes that are coming into the city. We just had a job that got over 200 resumes. So when I talk about getting the best and brightest, I have an incredible amount of leverage when we talk about who I'm gonna hire, because we're getting, uh, an enormous amount of resumes, and we're getting a lot of people who are interested, and a lot of people who are very, very qualified. And I can't stress enough that of the 39 people that I've hired, I've hired 37 qualified Revere residents. And, uh, it, it cannot, I cannot let things be said that are blatantly untrue. And just to go back a little bit further, um, I want to make sure that we all understand the, kind of, the environment that we're in, in City Hall. We have, or in the city as a whole. We have 121 non-school employees who currently reside outside the city of Revere. So 121 people, which consists of $7.4 million in payroll, that's going outside the city of Revere. We have, from 2002 to 2015, since the, uh, the residency waiver was put into, uh, into existence, there were 149 people hired who are currently still working for the city. Forty-five of those people, forty-five of those people who were hired between 2002 and 2015 reside outside the city, and they still continue to work for the city. That's 23% of people that were hired in that time were non-Revere residents. Over the, between 2012 and 2015, we had 15 hires that are currently working for the city who do not reside in the city of Revere. So when I hear those statements that, um, I'm hiring more and more people from outside, or that I'm constantly asking for waivers, there, it's not true. The, the numbers, uh, prove very clearly that that is not true. So it's hard to understand, um, the logic of, of those statements and to understand, uh, why those statements would be made. Um, the fact is that my administration has done more in terms of making sure that jobs are posted, making sure that they're publicly noted, there are public notices that go out, making sure that we put it online in, in every form possible to make sure that we're getting as many people as possible to apply for those jobs. And my administration has taken that to the next level, and that's why, you know, we put in the HR process, so it's why we've, we've made sure that we have policies and procedures, and that's why we will continue to do that. Um, what I, what I do wanna maybe mention or talk about, and I, and again, I hope we have an open and honest conversation about this, is that I am attempting to do things the correct way. And if you read that ordinance, the residency ordinance, it actually says right in the ordinance that there's a waiver provision. So the other thing that it was said a couple of times was, what's the point of having a residency requirement if we're gonna grant waivers? Well, the waiver was built into the residency requirement, because the people who put that together had the foresight to say, you know what, there are gonna be instances where, uh, somebody from outside the city may have qualifications that, that are, uh, better suited than, uh, and they may live outside the city. So in trying to be fully transparent and make sure that all of the people who, uh, come before the city, or who, who are gonna work for the city are, are properly brought to your attention in terms of the residency requirement, um, I have, I have brought waivers before this council. Um, but what we have to realize, and I hope we can have, again, an open and honest conversation about this, is that we have, there are people who are currently working for the city who do not have waivers, who live outside the city. And they were hired after 2002. So I just want feedback. I mean, when, this is the beginning, I think of a conversation with the council about whether or not there is a, a line in the sand now, uh, in terms of residency requirements and in terms of waivers. of waivers. If we're not going to approve any more waivers, what do I do with people who need them that I did not hire? That is a question that I'm posing to the council tonight. And I want to make sure that we keep in mind that, at the end of the day, we're all here, as I said, to provide the best services for the city of Revere. And again, the best way that I can do that as mayor, and the way that I've been entrusted by the residents of the city, is to make sure that we're hiring the most qualified and the best and brightest. And I'll say this, that it does me no good to be up here picking a fight with the council about an IT, a public safety IT professional who doesn't live in the city. But what I want to make sure that people understand is that my track record is proven that we're hiring, this administration hires Revere people, hires people who live in the city, and that, all things being equal, of course, I'm going to go with the Revere resident. I'd be foolish not to. It would be silly for me not to go with the Revere person. Of course, I want to give Revere people jobs. But in this instance, and specifically this instance, it was very clear that this individual, and that's why the hiring committee came before you, this individual was far and away the most qualified. And the entire rhetoric, I understand that this is, we're going into an election season, but the entire rhetoric about this situation and about this policy is really what, you know, concerns me, because I know that, we all know, this is a small city. We all know people who live outside of Revere, who work for the city. We all know, we may be related to some of them, and that's the case. But the fact is that what we do should be equal and open and transparent for everyone. So if we're going to tackle this issue, then we need to, I think, look at some of our friends and some of our family members who don't live in the city but do work for the city. That's really what I wanted to talk about tonight. I don't necessarily, I'm not looking to change the ordinance, I'm not looking for any action. I do hope that we continue a dialogue, because this is one of the key functions of my position as mayor, is hiring people and hiring qualified people, and that's the only way that we're going to make sure that we're providing the best services to the city of Revere. So I guess the two things I want to know are, you know, is there a line in the sand in terms of residency requirements? And, you know, what, if there is, what is, you know, the council's, what is the council's thought or feedback in terms of the people who require waivers, who I did not hire, who do not live in the city but are working for the city? With that, I look forward to, and we don't have to necessarily do it here, I know it's kind of late, but I look forward to having a continued dialogue and an open and honest dialogue about residency and about residency waivers. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Counselor Rotundo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to the mayor. I do want to clarify some of the numbers that you have here that you gave, and I'm grateful for them. My recollection is, and having been through this issue, the school, the police, and the fire are exempt from the residency law at the state level. So that only leaves City Hall employees and the DPW. Am I not correct there?
So I don't know about state law for police and fire. I believe it's in their collective bargaining agreements, but I'm not sure about that fact, but I know that
But I know that
It's in their collective bargaining agreement that
Right. And the same, I would tell you, the same thing is, I believe, en pas with the DPW, as I've actually challenged one of the DPW persons' residency in the past unsuccessfully.
There was a decision through DLR for one individual. I don't know, so, yes, to some extent, but it's not in their collective bargaining and it's not in state statute.
Right, but once it's regressive bargaining and anything thereunder. So once one has it, the others have it. I mean, that's just my recollection of how things like that work. So you're talking probably about 100 people at this point that are employed by City Hall, and by your numbers, it looks like 25 live outside the city and 103 live within sight. So the 25 that have been here, are they represented by a union at this point? Are they not represented? Are they department heads?
I don't know off the top of my head, but I can tell you that 99% of the city is represented by unions, so even department heads, as you know,
Right.
are represented by unions. So my guess is that if there are a handful of people who do not have union representation.
So at this point, that really narrows it down to probably, off the top of my head, maybe eight people who either are funded partially by grant money and/or live outside the city themselves.
These are people, you know, these are people that are straight-up salaried, paid for by the city of Revere.
So it's okay, so that's your number?
Paid for by the city of Revere.
So you're not
And I'm, so I'm not sure about fund, what fund they're being paid for, but I know that they're getting a city of Revere paycheck.
So for argument's sake, we'll just say the 25 straightforward. I mean, at this point, you asked, you know, should you go after them? The first question is, can you legally go after them? That's the first question, right? You have to have a legal premise following.
I'm simply saying that there has been a line in the sand in terms of waivers.
Right. Well, they've been here since 2002 now?
If I present to the council a handful of waivers, that is going to, and if they get denied, for instance, or if they get laid on the table or whatever, that is going to significantly inhibit my ability to run the city. There are people that are part of that group that are very important positions in the city.
Well, you're just pushing agenda. I mean, my point is very simple.
Counselor, with all due respect, I do more than push an agenda, but thank you.
Well, no, no. Well, obviously, that's what you just did. It's either you do something with the residency, or I'm going to have to send in a letter and ask for waivers for all these people, and they don't even qualify for it.
Counselor, I'm simply asking the question because I'm trying to have an open and honest and transparent conversation.
This is an open and honest
And this is a dialogue that I
But you're using numbers that are not appropriate.
Let's go to the president's chair, please.
Those numbers are absolutely appropriate, Counselor.
First, you said that these numbers were relative to hundreds of people, and then now that I've broken it down, that the school, the police, and the fire, either by contract or by state law
Counselor, my numbers, please listen.
I did listen.
There were 149 people, non-school employees, who were hired between 2002 and 2015. Of those 149 that currently still work for the city, 45 of them do not live in the city. That's all, that's all I'm saying.
The only people that are
We're not talking about hundreds of people.
The only people that are, I think, eligible underneath this issue are the City Hall people, which are 25 that do not live in Revere. The other people are irrelevant, because they are either fire, police, or school. And I'm going by your paperwork, not mine. So that's pretty straightforward. So there's 25 people that are at City Hall that do not live in the city of Revere. So bring this stuff up before us, and we'll talk about it.
Now, this is why I'm here, I'm bringing it up before you.
Yeah, no, no, no. So that's the 25.
Like I said, I want to have an open and honest dialogue.
Yep, no, so those people that, as you pointed out earlier, are represented by a collective bargaining agreement, how many of those out of the 25 would you put before us? Because you have to deal with the collective bargaining agreement before you even bother coming to us with a residency issue. So how many of those out of the 25 are actually, are going to receive a waiver?
I don't have those numbers in front of me.
So I'm going to expect you to come back with a detailed knowledge of who is not part of a collective bargaining agreement and looking for a waiver. It's not 110, it's not 35, it's probably less than the 25 there.
And I didn't, just to be clear, I didn't, I don't think I ever said that 110 or 35 or
Well, no, I'm saying that.
Okay.
That's my word, not yours. So, you know, so we're in agreement, there should be 25 or less, and I'm more than happy to discuss that with you. The other thing, as far as, you know, my opinion about someone, the IT person, geez, I know a ton of IT people, and quite honestly, I don't know why they didn't apply. Some of them actually live up in Overlook Ridge, one of them lives down at 650.
I'll tell you why they didn't apply, Counselor, because of the salary. Because the salary for that position, to get the, and that's why TAB was a good get, because the qualifications that come along with that kind of position and that kind of specialty in IT, it's not just somebody who can turn on a computer. You know, there's, there are specific things that both police and fire and the IT departments in both the school department and the city wanted to look for, and as we, as they went through the candidates, it was clear that some of them had no idea or no comprehension of some of those qualifications. This individual had those qualifications
And the knowledge.
And had the knowledge and had the experience, and it was clear that he was the most qualified far and away. And that's what that committee would have said.
And that's great. The other thing is, I won't mention his name full-forward, but a friend of mine, John, who's highly qualified, well-educated, a person here in the city of Revere, has now applied for three different positions, and I'm sure you know his name. He has a hygienist certificate, which is very well sought after. He's applied for a job at Inspection Services, he applied for a job with George Genzoni, and he is more than capable in every facet for each job that was, you know, asked of him, but for some reason, he wasn't picked.
And that's because there were more qualified people for the positions?
I doubt that, because I know the person who got the job, and he's not as more qualified as this person is. And that I can tell you by looking at both of their LinkedIn documentation, but that's different.
Counselor, that's good enough. Counselor Keefe?
Hold on here.
Counselor Keefe? You can come back, you can come back, you have 10 minutes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to
You want to dominate the whole meeting. That's your typical MO. We know that.
Have a good night, Bob. Try night well.
Man, thank you, Mr. President. Through you to the mayor. I don't want to get involved in that over there. But as far as your, you know, you brought up some really good stats, and I know we actually had some side conversations in regards to this, but you did ask just now, you said, you know, "What could we do?" It seems like there's been a line drawn in the sand. And, you know, I actually, you presented two waiver requests prior, and I actually voted for both of them. I prefer to see Revere residents get jobs, but, you know, like some of my fellow counselors, I want to see the most qualified people getting jobs as well. But what you did on both of those prior waivers was, we had conversations about the whys, the people, the rationale, the experience they bring to the job. This one here came to us. I had zero communications. I didn't know who the other applicants were. I didn't know there were six, I didn't know there were six other applicants that weren't as qualified until I was sitting in council chambers. So I would say what you could do in the future is, if you really want, or if your department heads really want a person that lives in another city that is more qualified for a job, to have that conversation in advance and explain the process. Because I still, to this day, don't know the six other people or five other people that were not chosen for the job. And that's where I felt a little bit more uncomfortable. I want to be more prepared when I come to council and have the information. So I went off of whatever research we could do. Charlie Patch and I looked up where this person lived and tried to get as much information as we could. I looked up where he worked before, and I said, "This person made six figures and had a big job for Putnam Investments, and he had a huge track record." And you know what my assumption was? He'd come to Revere as a bridge job and worked here for as long as he could until he found a better job that paid him $100,000 or $120,000 a year to afford the lifestyle that he probably had. And yes, some of that was assumptions, but that was my best judgment. So I said, "If I grant this waiver here," now, we didn't vote on it, the Appointment Subcommittee voted on it, "I'm going to risk upsetting a really, a huge lot of people, giving six people not a chance to get a job, and then in three months, this guy is going to give it to us, just like, unfortunately, one of the most notorious waivers." And that's where the problem lies. That's where the problem with the whole council lied that night. I would have granted the waiver had I gotten information upfront like I did with Ruben, who's done a phenomenal job, and initially, unfortunately, we're going to lose him, but Omar. I voted for both of them, and I stand behind them. Obviously, one's going to be gone, and the other one is hopefully going to continue to progress on with a very good career with the city. But that's what I think we could do better, is upfront information, more upfront.
Counselor, I appreciate the feedback. I will remind the council that I was entrusted by the voters of the city to hire and be the chief executive of the city. In terms of getting into the weeds on who applied and who may have not gotten a job, those are decisions that are entrusted with me, and I want to make sure that we're fully kind of, we have full and open lines of communication. And that's why we had the hiring committee before the Appointment Subcommittee, which is the place, I guess, in my, in my opinion, is a place for those conversations to happen, for the hiring committee to maybe talk about what kind of process was put in place. Now, those questions weren't asked by this council, and that's where I think maybe we can have an open dialogue about how those questions may happen in the future, but that was, in my opinion, that was the place for those conversations to have, to happen and to have. And so when it was clear that the qualifications of the candidate or the process or the validity of the process was not put to question, it was clear that there was more out there than just the qualifications of this individual in this position.
I won't disagree with you there. I'm not saying that was on my behalf, but I won't disagree with you there. But I would say, from my standpoint, is I would have liked more information upfront. But I agree. You know what? There's different reasons, every councilhead can speak for themselves.
And again, I want to talk about, and we've talked a little bit about individuals and some other reasons, this is a policy that's put in place. This is a policy that's put in place that hasn't necessarily been followed by other folks. So I want to make sure that there's a level of respect and a level of honesty and transparency in this conversation, because I am bringing people before this council to follow the rules. I was hired for this job, and a big reason for that is because I want to follow the rules, and I want to do the right thing. So the fact is, we have a process, I know the process, and it's clear that maybe some people don't even know the process. But that's why I'm here, to inform folks and let them know, number one, what the ordinance says in terms of the waivers and in terms of residency. And then, let's talk about how we're going to go forward with this and whether or not we're going to, you know, continue to have kind of conversations in circles, or are we going to, is there going to be a level of respect? When I am up here with a waiver, believe me, I don't necessarily want to give waivers out. The best thing for me is to hire people from Revere, and we've done that, and that's what my track record shows. What I want to make clear, and what I think hasn't been necessarily communicated to everyone, is that I am hiring Revere people, that I'm not necessarily just giving waivers away and I'm not hiring all these people from outside the city. Just want to put that to bed and put that
That's 100% clear, and I applaud you for that. And I applaud you for doing the right, I applaud you for going through the right process. 100%. But I also want to make sure that everyone knows it. You're not always going to get your way, and sometimes you don't, you just have to, you just have to tuck your tail and take it, you know? But you have done a very good job.
I don't tuck my tail, Counselor.
You don't have to tuck your tail, but you have to accept it sometimes.
But I will say that, if we, what I will say is that, as long as it's, again, an open and honest and transparent conversation, like I said, we all know people. Some of us have family and friends who work for the city who do not live here. So let's be honest and equal, and let's figure out what the right, what the right policy is for the city. And to make sure that we have, and I have, the flexibility to hire the most qualified people, and that I have, at the end of the day, I am providing and we are providing collectively the best services for the city.
Again, I applaud you, because you are doing the right thing in that scenario. As far as what you want, plan, what your thoughts are for the current employees, that's on you. You know, you handle that, and you're going to have to make that decision.
And I will. I just want to, I wanted to have feedback, I wanted to have a conversation about it, because I don't want there to be a surprise, and I could have done that today. I could have said, "You know what? Here are the waivers that I need," and I could have put everybody on the spot. I didn't want to do that. I want to have a conversation. I want to let people know that this is something that I've recognized as an issue. You know, we heard earlier tonight about recognizing issues that, you know, are of a legal matter. When I find out kind of issues or things that need to be addressed, I want to be able to have an open and honest conversation with the council about them, and I want to make sure that we're treating everyone fairly. That's all.
Thank you for, this is very good information. Thank you for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Novosolsky.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, through you to the mayor. Mr. Mayor, we had a brief discussion over the weekend, but you know, I still have an issue where there were 14 applicants. How many were from Revere? There were six interviews. How many were from Revere that got interviewed? And the numbers just don't, don't match. I get that. It just, you know, I received a call from a Revere resident who applied that did not get even an interview.
Okay.
And, you know, the least we can do is give the Revere residents the opportunity to have the interview instead of just pushing them away. They have some experience. Now, people handle interviews different than what their resumes say. And I think that more should be taken into account for that effect. Now, whether or not, I don't know if I'm going to vote for this guy or not.
So just to clarify.
I'm just trying to get, make sure that every resident gets the opportunity to be heard.
I understand it, believe me. Again, I can't say this enough. I do not, do nothing but benefit from hiring Revere people. I understand that. I want to hire Revere people, believe me. And if there are Revere people who are qualified, I have the track record of showing that we've, we hire them. We hire them at a better percentage than previous administrations. So the fact is that I, we are hiring people. In terms of this one, I can get you more detail on this individual position and who, you know, who applied and, and the numbers of people who applied and who was from Revere, who was not. Again, the, the hiring committee was pretty clear about what they were looking for in terms of experience and this was the one person who had that. What I will say in terms of the, the waiver that was put before you two weeks ago, that individual has removed his name for consideration, so that is not going to be an issue going forward.
Okay. Going, going back to the number of residents and, you know, that number 25 that popped up. And, you know, I tend to agree, which is not usual with Counselor Rotundo as far as the number, that 25 that don't live in Revere. The question I had was, you know, how many of those had lived in Revere and then moved out? How many had gotten promotions and changed their, changed their job that lived in Revere and moved? So, you know, if somebody works in Revere and they changed jobs and they, and they got a new job, as we discussed, I don't believe that's requiring a waiver.
Right. And I believe the, the data that was pulled was based on the date of hire. So not the date of a new position, but the date of the hire. And I, and I looked at a few people because there were, there were a couple of people that I was surprised that their, that their date of hire was prior to when I thought it was. And so it was clear that that date of hire was the first time that they were put on the city payroll. So, and in terms of the addresses and whether or not addresses change, I, I do not know specifically. I'd have to, there'd have to be a little bit more research on in terms of when, at the date of hire, what their address was compared to what it is now. What we have is the information that's on record in, in our payroll system and on, on the city's, you know, systems in terms of what the address that is attached to an individual is.
Because I know a lot of people that may be in that category that moved. You know, they were brought up in the city.
Right.
They lived in the city for 10, 12, 14 years while they were working. They moved away, they, for whatever reason, but they still got, they still worked in the city. And they may have gotten a promotion in the middle and I don't know if that was considered a new hire with a new promotion. I don't know that. I don't know what your people read into it. But, you know, I, and I don't think that's a big issue. But one key, one word rubs everybody the wrong way. One word. Somerville. Because every person that has had some connection coming onto this, and nothing against them personally.
That's not true, Counselor.
Excuse me?
Ruben has no connection to Somerville.
One person.
Okay.
This guy would have been two.
One of the two waivers, one of the two waivers that I've, I've given.
This guy would have been two.
One of the two waivers.
Mr. President.
Point of information, Mr. President.
Are we having a discussion on why someone isn't being hired or are we having a discussion over on the residency waiver and how we can better improve it, whether we're going to have it or not?
Excuse me, Mr. President. Exactly. We're, we're having both because it was brought up by everybody tonight. So we're just expanding on what everybody has been discussing. But that's, you know, that's, I just said my piece.
In, in just, in terms of, and luckily I have great staff who live in Revere and are Revere-born, who have no connection to Somerville. But I just found out in the city ordinance, it says that you cannot move. So that's the ordinance that's on the books. Again, we may want to look at, there may be some, some compromise or something that we do with the ordinance. That same ordinance says that individuals who moved, who, who are getting paid for, by the city or getting paid by the city, who don't live in the city and don't have a waiver, would be subject to fines of double the pay that they make. So this is, again, this is an ordinance that was passed in 2001 or 2002. It's one that I, I think everyone knows, you know, probably thinks they know a lot about, but haven't read in a while. And so there are pieces of it, like the fact that you're not supposed to move, that are in it and that we need to, we need to look at. And, and I'm happy to have that conversation. This is an important policy. Again, this is an important policy because at the end of the day, I want to make sure that we're getting the, the top, the most qualified people to come work for the city. And I want them to be from Revere. Believe me, I want them to be from Revere.
Thank you, Counselor, Counselor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll stay within the confines of the three-minute rule. First of, first of all, I think there's.
First one tonight to do that.
First of all, you know, I, I think there's, there's two issues here. And I can understand, you're the mayor. And I think just to go and hire somebody that lived in the city of Revere, that wasn't as qualified as another candidate that might, you might have in mind from outside of the city of Revere, to me, that would be, in a way, beneficial politically to you. You hire some guy in the city of Revere, he's got eight or nine relatives in the city.
Absolutely.
Okay? And I think that's the way this city has worked for many decades. And I think it's wrong. It's wrong. The people of this city elected yourself and myself and every members of the city council to represent them to the best of their ability. And to not voting for someone that was more qualified than other candidates just because they happen to live in the city of Revere would be the wrong thing to do. The wrong thing to do. If you have a candidate, and, and I wasn't involved in any of the interviewing, but I know when we had the team come up here last week or two weeks ago, and, and they said by far, by far, this, this individual was the most qualified. Then you hear things out on the street, well, you know, this guy lives in Somerville. I don't care about, I don't care if there were 10 people that were more qualified, could do a better job for the residents of this city, and they all live in Somerville. That wouldn't bother me as long as they were doing the better job and as long as they were qualified. I would rather see that than 10 people who maybe had 100 people in their, in their family that could, could vote for you or me or anybody else on this council. That's the wrong way to go. I appreciate what you've done. I think you're changing the tone of this city. And I will continue to support that as long as I'm a member of this city council. I think it's the right way to go and I applaud you for it. And I also would like to mention, as you did previously, the bulk of your staff lives in this city. They've lived in this city for a long, long time. And that's, and that's a good thing.
Right. Absolutely.
And the fact, yeah.
Thank you, Counselor. And, and to, to add to that, you know, the, the political benefit of hiring people from a big family, you know, is obvious.
Of course it is.
For me, and the reason why I'm here is to make sure that we're providing the best services to the city of Revere and to the residents of the city. At the end of the day, that is what is going to get me reelected. That is what is going to make sure that we're moving in the right direction, that we get people who want to invest in this community and we get people and we create a commercial tax base and we, we end up creating vibrant neighborhoods and we do all the things that we're all here late at night and I'm missing my baby's nighttime putting them to bed for. That's what we're here for. And that, and we're all in, in this together. And the fact is that I just want to make sure that we're hiring the best and the brightest and that we have the most qualified people and, and I look forward to this ongoing conversation.
And I applaud you for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Zimbudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your presentation. The more I learn about the, you know, I've been here a long time. The more I learn about this residency waiver, the more ridiculous it is. Not the waiver, the ordinance.
The requirements, yep.
The ordinance is ridiculous. It was put in and I, I dare say it was put in for political purposes because like everybody has said, if you put somebody to work, you probably got to get 10 votes from that family that you put that person to work. Now, that's fine if they're qualified. I'd like to see a residency preference, not a residency requirement, a preference. If the person is more qualified, he gets the job, period. Now, that gentleman that was up here, I don't know him from Adam, never met him, obviously was far more qualified than anybody else and we lost him. And, and you asked if there's a line in the sand? Yeah, the line, you know what the line in the sand is? Election year. And, and it was said by some of my colleagues, flat out that it's an election year and I can't vote for a waiver. Well, that's not the way I work and that's never the way I will ever work because I want the most qualified person for the job. Do I want Revere residents employed? Absolutely. And if they're qualified, that's the first choice. But when, especially that public safety position in IT was a no-brainer. That was the guy that should have been hired and nobody should have been looking at, it's an election year and it's going to cost me votes to give this waiver. Because that'd be the last time I'm ever up here if I ever vote that way. I want to see, and if God willing, I'm reelected this year, I am going to push to change this residency requirement to a residency preference. And, I mean, come on, somebody's worked here 15 years, finally moved, they can't move? They're going to be penalized by fines, double their pay? I mean, it's, it's our can. It's unbelievable that that's even in there and shame on me for not knowing it. But I, like a lot of other counselors that have been here a while, went along with ignoring the waiver. We've ignored it for many years. It's never ignored in an election year, trust me. But it's, it's ignored most times and it has been over the years. And my colleagues that have been here a long time know we've done that and we've looked the other way. And, and because we were looking out for the best interest of the city, we were looking for the best employees. And, you know, that's what we need to do up here. And, and so that's my goal and, you know, I, I feel bad that we lost what I think would have been the, the class candidate for that job. And, you know, I didn't look at it from a point that one of my colleagues did, that it might have been a bridge job. He seemed like he really wanted a job. But, you know, so maybe it's a blessing in disguise, but the bottom line is that we need to hire the most qualified people for the job, just like anywhere else in, in the private sector. And so my goal is to, at least at a minimum, change the residency requirement to a residency preference and I'll be glad to work with you on that if I'm still here.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Gonasso.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's been a long day and a long night. But let it be said that anybody who gets penalized for living in the city of Revere, that's new to me. I always thought it was a pleasure and an honor to live in the city of Revere. The applicant before us in that particular evening, he might have been, he could have had a scientist, rocket scientist degree. In my opinion, in all the years I've served as chairperson of the Appointment Subcommittee, he was the most combative person I have ever met. He might have had all the qualifications and this has come from all the sources and I know that most of them are non-residents. But that's fine. And, and I didn't have the opportunity to interview this individual. That's fine. That's not my role. The mayor's correct and I think the mayor is, is right in saying, standing before us and saying that he has the right to hire the most qualified individuals to work within our community. He's right. And was it said about people in an election year? Yeah, it's an election year. But the understanding is this, the ordinance is on the books, whether we choose to believe it or not, it's on the books. And if we have the mindset that we feel collectively that it should be replaced, we have the right to do that. But, you know, we do have an ordinance. We have ordinances that we're enforcing now that haven't been enforced for 30 years. We're doing that. But it comes at a cost and, and it's disruptive to some people. And there are many people out there, contrary to what some of us might believe, that feel very strongly about the residency law. And they, and they have a right for that opinion. And, and every right that we have is to hire the, the most qualified candidates to work within our community. But it's not really a bad thing to oppose someone who doesn't live here if we have a residency law on the books. It's not a bad thing. Don't look at it as a negative impact. And I, I just feel, and I think my colleague to my left might have it right on the head, his qualifications were so great in terms of the resume that I read, that it might have been a bridge. It might have been an opportunity to, in the process of lining something better up and make sure I have something in place. It's my understanding that, that candidate withdrew his application. But having said all that, he might have had those thoughts in the process before that, the, in this embarrassing situation. I think myself, as a counselor, I think I've worked well with the administration. I've worked well with this mayor. And I think that this mayor is doing the best thing for our community on several occasions. This particular occasion, I have strong beliefs in. I really do. And I feel that, I don't know anything about the qualifications of those other individuals, but what I did do on, on my own is I inquired with some people who are technical in that field. And they said that it wasn't as technical as some people led us to believe, communicating with the one department versus another. Yes, it's high-tech, but there are many people who are qualified that could do that job. And I'm sure that there's some people, however the mainstream was to advertise this particular position, I don't know. Was it the Revere Journal? Was it the Advocate? Whatever the, the, the means of media exposure to post this position. This individual came charged with, with one thing in mind and he came that night with the appearance that I am the savior of this city and, and you better, you better pay attention to me. And the way he spoke to me, I let it go for like 10 minutes and then I just think about, had it read up about here, about you might have the best qualifications in the world, but you learned, you've lost something in, in your diplomacy and the way you conduct yourself when it's contentious. And, and in, in that particular position, I would give him a zero because he wasn't very good in that. His technical manner might be great, but I don't think it's, it's any disrespect to you, Mayor. I don't, I think that you, and I give you the most respect in the world.
Thank you, Counselor.
And I honor what you said.
And I agree that you have been, you have been very supportive of my administration. I appreciate that. And I know that, that we can, we can disagree without being disagreeable. And the fact is, you know, part of why I wanted to talk about it tonight was so that we do lay all the cards on the table. There is an ordinance in place. You know, what, what do we want to do going forward? And I respect your, your opinion.
I really.
I respect your opinion. I understand that you have a job to do as a, as a ward council. You have folks that you represent. I respect that. I, I look forward to a dialogue and a conversation and I, you know, I do appreciate your, your support and you have been supportive.
Well, my, well, my responsibility, Mayor, is that the electorate out there is the one who, who tells me, yes, you have this seat and no, you don't. And in the conversations I've had with several of them, I didn't just come to this conclusion on my own. Obviously, I reached out. And everybody to the person said, don't, don't falter in this.
reached out. And everybody to the person said, "Don't falter in this." You know, and, you know, I come up here ready to be as polite and objective as possible to the candidate, and I let him go, and let him go, and then he came to the point where it was no longer tolerable.
And certainly, there are lessons to be learned, and I am the first one to think about situations and how we can do a little bit better. And you've cataloged some things that we need to work on, as Counselor Keith has. And I think that it's constructive criticism. I know that, you know, we need to be able to work together. Again, we need to, we may disagree, but we don't have to be disagreeable about it.
We're looking forward to working with you.
And if there's constructive criticism that I can take, I will take that, and make sure that I do a better job.
You know, I don't hold back. You know, I don't take my conversations publicly when I discuss things with you. I call you right away, and we get it resolved.
Take it, Counselor. Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to the mayor. I just wanted to say that two weeks ago, I said that if there was a waiver for the revered schoolteachers, we wouldn't have the education that we have in the city. Same thing goes for the fire, and same thing goes for the police. I just don't understand, and I know that half of the people in City Hall are grandfathered in, and they don't live in the city. I just don't understand why we have this ordinance on the books. And then, you know, this could be popular, or this could be unpopular. I agree with my counselor on my left, that I think we should revisit this, and change the ordinance, and get the best people to work in the city. And I'll be glad to sit with you and help you in any way I can.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to the mayor. Actually, you know, I think this was the wrong battle to pick on this gentleman, on this position. I mean, and the police, I'm a public safety chairman. I've worked there. I mean, you have a, the IT department there, you have a full-time captain lieutenant that basically, that's their job, run the IT, you know, together, probably $300,000. Now, you have this guy, very overqualified, comes in, I believe the job was what, for 50,000?
$55,000, maybe.
$55,000, whatever. I mean, it's obvious, you know, granted, he lived in Saguas, he could be convenient, but, you know, he'd hang on for it until he could find something else. But I don't understand, I mean, this captain lieutenant, they've handled this job for several years. I know they did have a guy, Mr. Morales, I think they had this job at one time, that this guy was going for. But I didn't know him, and he didn't stick around. But...
But that was a position that was being filled, Counselor. That was a position that was being filled.
Right.
Was Guillermo's position.
Right.
Because he went to the academy and did not go through, did not finish the academy, but he went to the academy, that position opened up at that point.
I understand.
And so, was backfilling that position.
But what I'm saying, this guy was very, was very overqualified. And do they need, do these two people actually really need a guy that overqualified? And basically, I would say that, you know, for the salary, $55,000, I mean, a no-brainer for a guy from Revere, or a girl from, a lady from Revere. I mean, today, these kids with IT, I mean, they're all qualified, love when I am. But, I mean, that would have been a point where, you know, hey, here's my chance to get somebody, he had six from Revere, here's my chance to get, you know, put a guy in from Revere, or a girl from Revere, and for a job. I mean, it's a low-paying job. Granted, your next, honest to God, your next job, if a guy comes in, you look for a waiver, I will gladly, if he's the most qualified, I would, if he, you know, if he's going to move into Revere, I will accept a waiver. But this was, this was a chance, I think, that you could have had, to really pick a guy, or a girl from Revere.
And Counselor, as...
And those guys, all they're going to do is, you know, I know how it operates over there, so you really didn't need a guy that qualified.
And Counselor, as I said, and I think as my track record shows in hiring individuals, I want nothing more than to hire revered residents, and I've done that.
Yeah.
I've done that. That's a fact.
I know you have.
So, well, you didn't know that two weeks ago. So, I want to make sure that the things that are said out here, in this auditorium, in this chamber, are factually correct, and that I am hiring, I've hired 37 of the 39 people who I've hired, live in Revere. And those are things that I want to make sure that people understand.
There should have been 38, in my opinion, because you hire Revere. Thank you. I'm done.
What do you want to do with this issue?
So, I would hope to continue the conversation with the council. It sounds like there is some, an appetite to continue the conversation. I don't know if you want to put my communications to the council into committee, or if you want to just hold off on it and maybe discuss it in a little while, but I think that it's worth having. I will have maybe individual conversations with councilors, and maybe we can continue that conversation.
Tab no longer is interested.
Tab is off, is done.
All those in favor of placing a file? All those opposed? So voted.
Sorry, can we move on to the floor?
What?
We're going to be out of there.
Yeah. What, yeah, which one? Yeah. Suspension of the rules at this point in time?
The FY 2018 proposed budget.
Mr. Mayor.
I'll make my remarks brief, because I know this is going to go into the Ways of Mean Subcommittee, and I'm sure there'll be further conversation, and everyone will get their fine-tooth comb out. But I just want to make a couple of points about this fiscal year's budget, that we, I've sent up to you, and I apologize for it being late, but I thought better late than in another two weeks or another week. So, we wanted to make sure that it got up to you. And there will be, I will kind of add the caveat to this conversation, that there will be additional information that's coming out, that we will present in terms of the budget. But a couple of things that I just want to mention, and want to make note of, are that this budget continues with our trend of holding the line on costs for the city of Revere. Our non-school spending is a little under 3%, which is, which, you know, I think is a testament to my finance team and my department heads making sure that we're looking at every single penny that gets spent, and that we're making sure that it's being spent efficiently. This does include the raises that were negotiated for DPW, police, and fire. And you'll see that there's a salary, a salary fund in, actually, the mayor's budget for those. But I wanted to make sure that it was clear that we were not underfunding the raises that were negotiated. Another point that I want to make is that we are not planning on using stabilization money for this budget, which is something that I know is not very sexy to talk about, but is something that's really important. And I've talked a lot about our financial discipline and fiscal discipline, and our ability to make sure that we're not dipping into the rainy day fund. This budget does not presume that we will have to go into the rainy day fund. And in fact, as you remember a couple of weeks ago, we've actually made an additional investment in the rainy day fund of $1 million from the free cash that was recently certified. So, not only we're not using rainy day money, but we're adding money to it. A couple of things, key investments that are, you will find are continued to be funded are the 311 call center, which I've talked about, we're fully funding that call center with two individuals and a director of innovation data management, and HR, which we just spent a little bit of time talking about. But that position will be fully funded for this year, and it is my hope that we will have somebody coming on board very, very soon. So, not only do we have, you know, some key investments made, but we're making sure that we're not using our stabilization and reserves, and we're kind of staying on the path of fiscal discipline that I've tried to implement since being here, January 2016. So, I want to thank my staff, who were running around like crazy people today. I want to thank the city auditor, Lori Giudella, and Director of Finance, George Anzoni, for their hard work on this budget, and everyone of my department heads who helped put this budget together. As I said, I'm sure you'll have a little bit of time to read over this, and you'll have more detailed questions. We will be prepared to answer those questions when they come up, and look forward to the continuing conversation. If anyone has any questions now, you know, I'm free to answer them, but if not, I'm sure I'll hear from some of you maybe tomorrow morning. So, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. John, when do you want to have some meetings with this? Have you thought about it yet?
I'm sitting down. We're actually...
Come up with a schedule? Okay. All right. That's good.
Again, we'll make sure that we're, like, I will be available, but my department heads will be available at your convenience, Counselor, and at the committee's convenience, to make sure that we answer every question that you all have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Tondo had to leave, and he asked us to eliminate 12202, and that's basically the Revere ordinance pertaining to hostages' negotiations. Also, 17205, a certificate of merit she wanted to eliminate, and also 17206, another ordinance pertaining to the police and fire department. He wants to eliminate those and take them off the schedule. In other words, he would like to address and keep on the calendar, 17200, 17201, 17203, 17204, I know, 17207, 17, okay, that's about it, and 17210. Okay? Now, moving on with the agenda, yeah, communication reader.
Communication from the mayor relative to FY 17 transfer requests.
Mr. Mayor?
Just very quickly, as most of the council knows, at the end of the year, we true-up some accounts that may have been in deficiency, some accounts that may have had additional money left in them. That this communication to the council is a representation of those accounts getting cleaned up at the end of the year.
Counselor?
Mr. President, through you and the mayor, is there going to be a cover letter or an explanation of why these are happening, and where they're coming from?
There wasn't one communicated with the communication, but, you know, I can make sure that we answer any questions that you all may have. I don't, I think we were figuring, as long as this was done by the end of the fiscal year, we'll be okay. I think that'll be fine. So, it's not necessarily for you to, you know, give a yes or no to. Again, these are accounts where they may, you know, you find overtime accounts that go over budget, and then there are other accounts, like salary accounts that may, like, straight salary, that may cover those overtime costs. So, there, it's essentially, you know, whatever accounts were kind of over, we're trying to make sure we make whole. So, if there was one in particular, I may know it off the top of my head if you had a question.
Well, you know, what I'm thinking, you know, I brought it up earlier, as far as, we're talking about DPW personnel. And I know in the budget, you put in like six additional positions in water and sewer.
In water and sewer.
Yeah, right, right. And I was wondering if, you know, I know you didn't spend the money. Is that in here somewhere? Are you using it elsewhere, someplace else?
So, I think, and I'm not 100% sure, I could look at it quickly, I think that that's only general fund transfers. I don't know if there are any transfers in water and sewer. But what I will say about the hiring and the addition to the water and sewer staff, is that, yes, we did have, I think, seven positions that were included in last year's budget, one of which, or maybe on top of that, but there was a superintendent position that we had, you know, tried to fill. I had, again, going back to the hiring practices of the city, we went through a process where we had a number of people apply for that position, some people from outside the city, some people from in the city. We did not get to a point where we had somebody that we thought was really on the level that we were looking for. And so, one thing that I want to make sure is that if we do, if I do hire a superintendent, water and sewer superintendent, that they have the flexibility to hire staff. And so, the idea would be that they would be responsible, and they would help build their own staff in terms of the needs of the department. Now, we're getting to a point, and I understand what you're going to say, and I know what's going through your head, we're getting to a point where I, where we may need to start posting some of those positions and getting people in, and foregoing the idea of the superintendent being able to pick some of the staff. I know, I'm with the audit. So, I know that that's an issue, and I know that's something that we, I need to look seriously at, is maybe posting some of those positions. I will say that a couple of those positions are pretty, they're not straight-up labor positions. There's one that's an electrician, that we will, we may have some difficulty finding a revered resident for. And because of the pay, again, you know, electricians now are pretty busy with work. To get somebody who would be at the level that we're looking for, we may have some difficulty. We were lucky enough to get a mechanic from, that lives in the city, and he has been working down at DPW. But I think we need to have, we could have a further conversation about whether or not we start posting those positions, and we get some bodies in water and sewer. That may be our next step, instead of looking for a superintendent and allowing them to mold their team.
Right. And even this, Mr. Mayor, those tradespeople that you were just mentioning, you know, I think we need the bodies on the ground, you know, and they're technical people. But when you get into water and sewer, you know you're talking about men, women, getting into the hole.
Boots in the hole. Yep, absolutely.
You know, and I think that's what we need, because our guys are worn out. They are really worn out. I know Joe said he can handle a lot of his stuff, but, you know, I've seen them. You know, I've seen, you know, when they're overworked, the attitude that they have, you know, and listen, they're great guys, but I know when you're overworked, you're that thin, you know, and anything's going to set you off. And I've heard it from people on the street. So, you know, these guys need some, the cavalry to come in and help them out. So, please, do it, you know, and like you just said, the boss doesn't always mean anything. You get some bosses now that can handle the jobs.
Right.
Please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel Order 17-213, the appointment of Matthew McGrath to the Board of Assessors. Council Order 17-208, motion presented by Councillor Morabito that the mayor authorize an inspector to correct the following issues on the Marquee Bridge located on Revere Beach. The bridge has two broken wire cables under one of the handrails. Secondly, the stairs going down to Ocean Ave are in need of major repairs. The cement is crumbling, stairs are lifting, and the stair rises are falling apart. These repairs constitute a public safety hazard for pedestrians utilizing this area.
Thank you. I would like to amend the motion.
DCR?
DCR. Also, this motion was brought to me by a constituent, and I think it's a concern that we need to take care of before the warm weather comes.
All those in favour? All those opposed? So voted? So passed?
Calendar item number 17-209, motion presented by Councillor Powers and Councillor Novoseltsky that the mayor notify the new owners of NECO to clean their property along the east side, along the fence at the Amtrak tracks.
Councillor Powers?
Thank you, Mr. President. Basically, it speaks for itself. Councillor Novoseltsky and myself were down there about a week ago, and I tell you, talk about blight. They just paid $54 million for a piece of property. I suggest they spend another couple of hundred dollars and clean it up. Thank you, Mr. President.
So, Novoseltsky? Pass? Anyone else? Councillor Zimbudo?
Thank you, Mr. President. I certainly agree with the motion, but I do want to put out a little point of information. There was some terrible misinformation when this company did purchase NECO, and everybody was under the assumption NECO was going out of business. Well, they're flourishing over there. And I just want the taxpayers to know that our largest taxpayer is not going anywhere. They just happened to rent off a new company. They were renting off the other equity company, and they're doing very well. So, I just wanted to make that perfectly clear. Thank you.
So voted?
Council Item 17-214, motion presented by Councillor McKenna that the mayor request the DPW to repair the Unity Bradstreet Ave, Winthrop Crescent Ave, and Pearl Bellingham Ave public stairways. These stairways are heavily trafficked, and therefore are a public safety issue for pedestrians.
Councillor McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm not going to talk long about this, because it really speaks for itself, but we have hills in Beaumont, and many people use the public stairs for access to go through. And we have two concrete stairs, and they're disintegrating. I have pictures of it, but I didn't put them up. But I just want, I've been asking for these stairs to get redone, probably, what, I've been here for two and a half years? Two and a half years? So, thank you.
Councillor, all those in favour? All those opposed? So voted?
Mr. President, point to point, personal privilege.
Councillor Morabito?
Can I just say, let the viewers know that tomorrow, there'll be an hot show on the Marquee Bridge at 6:00 PM.
No, it's Beach One.
Beach, at Beach One. I'm sorry, I apologize, at Beach One. At 6:00 PM, you can see our own fellow councillor, Joanne McKenna, featuring her hot show. Also, it's the mayor's birthday, so let's wish him a happy birthday as well.
Happy birthday.
One late motion.
One late motion, 17-216, motion presented by Councillor Powers that the mayor direct inspectional services to address the following issues. One, high weeds in and around the dumpster located at 1133 North Shore Road. Two, condition of the retaining wall adjacent to the sidewalk of the property located at 505 Revere Street. Retaining wall and sidewalk are on North Shore Road, which is part of 505 Revere Street property. That it be corrected, and the area of the sidewalk cleaned. Three, cleaning of debris and other material in and around the property located at 29 Thayer Ave.
Thank you, Mr. President. 505 Revere Street, that's owned by an organization from Malden, and I would suggest that the Inspection Services Department get down there and correct the two large pieces of cement that are, one of them is right on the sidewalk before somebody falls and gets seriously hurt. And then, right next door, you have that antique store, so-called antique store, and the weeds around the dumpster are almost as high as the dumpster, and in some cases, higher. And then, 29 Thayer Avenue, that's a story all by itself. That's where they wanted to put 42 condominiums, and 40B, and everything else, and I guess they weren't too successful. So, I would suggest that the Building Department get down there and pay particular attention to cleaning that lot up in its entirety. There are probably 50 violations you could write down there. Thank you, Mr. President.